Welcome to City Hall. We'll get started this morning with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Danny Kavanagh is the pastor at South Park Baptist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Pat Ryan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
God, we thank you for this day. We give it to you. We want to honor you in what we do. God, you told us to ask for wisdom, and we do, and we ask for guidance and discernment, prudence, fortitude. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
from the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City, a group traditionally known as the Downtown Oklahoma City Rotary Club, starting a brand-new tradition in relationship with the Oklahoma City Council and myself, and that is that we will be honoring a Teacher of the Month from Oklahoma City. And Meredith Ronaski is the Teacher of the Year. Meredith, where are you? Come on out. Let's have a round of applause for Meredith. We have prepared a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Meredith Ronaski has been named Teacher of the Month by the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for August 2010, and whereas Meredith teaches biology, pre-AP and AP biology, chemistry, and biotechnology at Capitol Hill High School, she also coaches cheerleading, girls' golf, and volleyball. Whereas Meredith has been nominated for Teacher of the Year by the National Association of Biology Teachers, and she is a finalist for the 2011 Oklahoma Teacher of the Year, she has also been honored as a Capitol Hill High School 2009 to '10 Building Teacher of the Year, the Oklahoma City Public Schools 2010 to '11 District Teacher of the Year. And whereas Meredith left a successful career as a biochemist to teach, to not only motivate students to ask the questions, but imbue them with the knowledge and tools to find the answers. Whereas Meredith believes that relationships provide the fundamental basis for student success, and that continually working on her own professional development to improve her teaching skills is a tremendous positive influence on her students to set and achieve their goals for the future. Whereas Meredith also believes it is her responsibility to help students become socially aware, conscientious, and caring citizens, and she encourages student involvement in volunteer opportunities like hosting food drives and blood drives, as well as hosting a family science night for the community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Meredith Ronaski on her selection as August 2010 Teacher of the Month by the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Now Meredith, this is where the controversy comes in. We have to get a motion and a second and actually vote on this.
Okay.
All right. Motion, second. Cast your votes. How about that? Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
I'd just like to say thank you to the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for this wonderful honor. I'd also like to thank the City Council and Mayor Cornet for hosting us this morning. It's really humbling to hear all of these things about yourself. And wow, I guess I'm really busy. It looks a lot more busy when you see it on paper, I guess. But once again, thank you for this honor. It's an honor to represent Capitol Hill High School and the Oklahoma City Public School District and Ward 6. Thank you.
Thank you for your commitment to the children of Oklahoma City.
Mayor, would it be okay if I just made a couple of comments about this?
Absolutely.
This is a brand-new program, and we have with us Robin Hilder today, too, who's with the Foundation for the Oklahoma City Public Schools. And this is a partnership that has begun, really, with all three of us, and I just wanted everyone to know that Meredith will also be recognized at the next Rotary Club lunch. And the Rotary Club, the Club 29 Foundation, and the partnership for Oklahoma City Public Schools will be contributing a total amount of $500 to be given each month to the Teacher of the Year for them to be able to use in your classroom or as you see fit. So I also see the Capitol Hill High School principal here. We're very happy to have you here as well. But this is an exciting program and provides an opportunity for us on the council to recognize the great work that's being done in our public schools.
Absolutely. And we have some wonderful teachers out there, and thank you for coming forth with the idea, along with the Rotary Club, to allow us to expose all the great things that are going on, not only in the Oklahoma City Public School system, but throughout the other 23 districts that serve kids that live in Oklahoma City. So Meredith, congratulations on being the first. Our next recipient today of a resolution is in response to one of the longest-serving amounts of civic duty ever accomplished in the city of Oklahoma City. We have somewhere between 40 and 45 boards and commissions, and these are largely volunteers in the city of Oklahoma City who come forth as citizens to try and help guide the city council in a different direction. And Sig Hartman served the Oklahoma City Golf Commission for 45 years, give or take a year. That's a long time to give up one Wednesday a month in service. And I think he would be just as proud of the fact that we believe that we have the finest public golf courses in the United States. When you compare the value and the quality of the course that you get to play in Oklahoma City, it matches up with any other place in the country. And so we have his wife, Helene, here with us today to receive a resolution. We also have some members of the Oklahoma City Golf Commission and some professionals who worked with Sig through the years. I'd like everyone that's come up here to support Sig Hartman to come forward. Helene, we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Sigman Alexander Hartman Jr. was born in Oklahoma City on October 12, 1925, and died July 21, 2010, at the age of 84. And whereas upon graduating high school at 17, Sig was accepted into the Navy V-12 program, received his degree in mechanical engineering from the University of Virginia, and was then commissioned as an ensign in the United States Navy. Whereas after military service, Sig returned to Oklahoma City and Oklahoma Paper Company where following in his father's footsteps, he served as president of the family business. And whereas Sig sold the business in the late 1980s and became a commercial real estate agent, he continued working as an agent until his passing and is sure to be greatly missed by his colleagues and clients. Whereas Sig Hartman was proud to be a lifelong resident of Oklahoma City and proud to be a community leader in his hometown, over the years, he served in a leadership capacity with numerous organizations, most notably the Oklahoma League for the Blind and the Oklahoma City Golf Commission. Whereas Sig was able to combine public service with his favorite pastime, golf. While serving on the Lincoln Park Board of Directors in 1962, he was selected to serve on the newly-formed Oklahoma City Park Trust. The success of the Park Trust led to the formation of the Oklahoma City Golf Commission in 1966, on which Sig served for over 40 years. Sig is survived by his wife of 52 years, Celine, son Jonathan, daughter Louise, and her husband Jonathan Stone, grandchildren Chaz, Taylor, and Ivan, his brother David, brother-in-law Joshua Mus, and a host of nieces, nephews, and cousins. Whereas Sig Hartman will always be remembered as a great golfer and a man wholly dedicated to his family and his faith. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby extend their deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Sig Hartman.
Need a motion? Here in a second. Cast your votes. Resolution passes unanimously. Helene, thank you so much for allowing Sig to spend so much time bettering the lives of people in Oklahoma City. We're all going to miss him greatly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, before Ms. Hartman leaves, I want to tell you personally how much I appreciate Sig. You know, golf in Oklahoma City probably has never had and probably never will have a better advocate than he was. He was 24 hours a day, seven days a week, an advocate for golf in Oklahoma City, and I personally appreciate it, and thank you for coming today.
We're just family.
That's a great, that's a great cause.
I neglected, right before we went out the door, to draw attention to the fact that former mayor Andy Coats was in that group. Andy serves the city on the Golf Commission today and was down here to help support his fellow commissioner Sig Hartman in the resolution today. We're on to item three of the council agenda. We've already voted on item 3A and 3B. I'll accept a motion on item 3C, D, and E. Can you comment your questions on these items?
I'd like to talk about, just a comment about D.
Okay.
I understand why we're doing this, but I have a feeling this is a slippery slope to go on. This is not the way we planned it. I recognize that kind of an aberration has occurred that causes us to need to do this, but I think we should be very careful about this and make sure that this is actually, the reason we're doing this is an absolute exception and not the rule of how we're going to do this in the future.
I think we need to get it set up right.
Yeah.
That's what this does.
And I just, I just, I've, you know, this is a, this is a, MAPS 3 is a project of the citizens of Oklahoma City, not the citizens of all the surrounding communities, like some of our other projects have been, like MAPS for Kids was. And I just think we need to be very vigilant that this is, and I understand why we're doing this one. I have no qualms about doing this for this reason, but, but I have a worry that down the road, this may be misused, and I would hate to see that happen.
Okay, fair enough. Ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. This time, I'd like to move up item 11A. This is a homelessness report. Russell Claus, my city staff, has come to us. We have engaged with an outside agent to look at the issue of homelessness in Oklahoma City and to try and determine closely as we can what the issue of homelessness is costing our community. And Russell is here with more details.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do have a presentation here on this as well. I think you have copies of that as well as the report. This report arose out of recommendations from the mayor's homelessness task force a couple of years ago, but it's something that has been requested and longed for by the community, the many different agencies that are working on the homelessness issue for a long period of time now, and they have been asking to know exactly what it costs this community to address the homelessness issue. And we were finally able to allocate the funds to be able to do that. We hired Jill Spangler and associates, and I think Jill is here today. And we also asked for a number of volunteers to serve on an oversight committee for this exercise, and we have a number of those represented here today as well. And I know they put a lot of time into this, and if they could stand, or if they're already standing, wave their arms, but just to acknowledge the amount of time that these people have put into this effort and continue to do so on a daily basis. They are our front line on this issue, and we really appreciate their efforts and their contributions to this report. And this report is now going to be able to inform us as we move forward. So greatly appreciate your time and attention. There were actually about 40, 44 agencies that were involved in this study. The study lasted from April of last year to March of this year, and as I said, it was conducted by Jill Spangler, and it is an excellent report. It does a really good job of describing the situation. So very appreciative of that as well. Key findings for this. Well, the total cost in addressing homelessness within that study period, within that 12-month timeframe, was calculated to be almost $29 million. And I don't think this is the full cost, because there were a couple of things that we weren't able to measure during that time period, but nevertheless, this is a significant amount of investment by this city to be able to address this. And a large amount of that, even while there's some in-kind and there's some volunteer time involved in that, the largest part of this, over 80% of this, was actually cash invested in assisting the homelessness. 50%, more than 50% of the cost were incurred by emergency shelters, just like City Rescue Mission and Jesus House, et cetera, and then hospital emergency rooms. So over half the money, half of that $28 million, is going to address those particular costs. In terms of a split between public and private, almost 60% of the costs are being borne by private sources, with the other 40% being borne by the public. This is a key break, just a breakdown of the top four cost categories for services. There's also housing programs, which was about $5.6 million. So those are the number-one categories in terms of where those dollars are going. And you can see there on the largest piece of that pie is $8.7 million. That is for emergency shelters. The next largest pie is the red piece, which is for the hospital and emergency medical assistance. And then you have mental health and law enforcement. You can see that number of $1.7 million. That is largely the Oklahoma City Police Force who are providing those costs. And the average cost for transporting somebody varies, but it's around two, over $200 and something dollars. And for EMTSA, who also carry a lot of, move a lot of people around in the homeless system, their cost is over $400. So every time that happens, it incurs a significant cost for Oklahoma City. And then mental health and substance abuse, we have a number of different providers there who are helping out on that particular service. On the, just going back, Joan, on the emergency shelters, we are, we are providing approximately 812 beds per night, every day of the, every night of the year, at a cost of about $30 a night. That is, that is a significant cost for us, and emergency shelter beds are a lot more expensive than either transitional housing, which is about half that cost, or permanent housing. So it's, it adds up fairly quickly, which is why you have that extremely large number there, $8.7 million for the emergency shelters. This next chart is an illustration of perhaps where we may be misallocating our resources, $8.7 for the emergency shelters, but we only spent $107,000 on case management. Case management is the system that we use to be able to keep people out of emergency shelters. So it was the lowest cost for the uncovered during the whole cost of homelessness study, as opposed to the highest cost was the emergency shelter. We would like to shift those around so that we're investing more time and money on case management and keeping people out of emergency shelters and keeping them as productive citizens, something that they would appreciate and that is going to lower our costs as well. So that's a key finding of the report. Equally with the cost of beds, as I mentioned before, the emergency shelter beds are the most expensive, and we're spending 30% of our total cost on addressing those, as opposed to only 9% for permanent supportive housing. You can see the cost difference here. It costs approximately 20% less to provide permanent housing rather than those as emergency shelter beds. So that's another shift that we're trying to bring about. Now that we have these numbers, we've got a clearer idea of what the benefits are, so there'll be more effort directed towards shifting that ratio as well. And then in terms of next steps, well, obviously, there's a lot, lot more to do. We have made progress. Last year was the first time that the count for homeless in Oklahoma City has actually gone down, but we have a lot more yet to do. We're going to continue to work on improving the cost effectiveness and performance of all the different providers, providing better outreach to those people who are on the street, and realigning the homeless system services so that we're working better together. The West Town Resource Center, which is currently under construction, is going to help in that regard, I think, significantly, because we'll finally be able to put a lot of those service providers under one roof so that they can coordinate and be able to deliver those services much more efficiently and at a lower cost. That also relates to the referrals and services that will be undertaken through there. And then we are, as I said several times during this presentation, you're going to move from this crisis mode, this dealing with the last-minute issues and trying to provide permanent solutions. That's the focus that we, what we hear from, from the federal government when they assign these dollars to us, and that's the focus that we're going to continue to move towards. And I think that's it, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that. Jane Farrell, who was on my staff, and put a tremendous amount of time into coordinating this effort. Charlie Coon is here as well. They have been the major coordinators of this, and I'm sure they can answer any of the technical questions that I, there are a lot of statistics in this, in this report, and I'm not sure that I remember all of them, but if you have any specific questions, we'll try to answer them, or at least get back to you on that.
Yeah, I would like the council to engage in this study. We've obviously spent a great effort to accomplish this and would like to see where we go from here from a council perspective. Sam, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Thanks, Mayor. Want to agree first with Russell on the excellent report that's been done. I want to commend this group on the thoroughness and the insightfulness and the comprehensive. I thumb through it, and I just want to point out one thing that probably has as direct a relationship to the city of Oklahoma City as any, and where, without a recommendation, where we might give some thought to looking at some points of intervention. About 10% of the cost, of these total costs, are attributed to our first response calls. That's police, fire, and EMTSA. We have, and have for years, a very effective intervention with respect to the police response. That's the detox center, no question about it. But with regards to the higher cost that end up in emergency rooms, first response, our firefighters and our EMTSA people, the idea of some kind of case management, and I'm glad you pointed that out, the discrepancy between the small amount of money that's been earmarked for case management, $100,000, $107,000, compared to the enormity of this problem, that it might be in that area of case management, that some point of intervention with regards to our first response, fire and EMTSA, might be a place we can capture and move people out of this very, very expensive services that represent a big, big part of this cost. And we've done that with detox. We just haven't yet had any way to address those EMTSA and firefighter responses, except to end up in emergency rooms. And that's a direct relationship to our cost, the city, and I just ask if we put some focus on addressing that.
Thank you. Okay, Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to comment, the 28, almost $29 million in this report, if you read the report, you'll come away with the feeling that most of this money is spent just on maintenance, keeping people in shelters and feeding them for the day. There's not very many dollars here devoted to the actual cause of homelessness and dealing with getting people out of the homeless system. And I think we need to realize that it is a very expensive burden for this community to bear. The $29 million we're talking about here is just, I hate to use the phrase, a tip of the iceberg. There's a significant cost that we're not, that was not represented in this report that we have to deal with. And so I think that although the numbers of homelessness maybe dipped down a little bit, it is still a major economic issue for this community to deal with. And we need to get to the root cause of homelessness and begin to deal with some of those issues as opposed to just putting them in a shelter for a night, which is necessary and desirable to do. That's just the first step. We need to go beyond that, I think. And this report, I think, will help focus on the costs of just simply maintaining it and not dealing with, unfortunately, not dealing with the issues, I think, are important as causes of homeless.
Meg?
Just really a quick comment about the report. That $29 million number is staggering. There is an anecdotal piece in here that speaks to just the case of one gentleman. And over the course of this 12-month period, that individual cost $160,000, I believe is the correct number. And to me, that really brought home the issue of how we need to tackle this kind of on a one-on-one basis. And, you know, we know that our hospitals, and in a sense, a very disproportionate number of small hospitals are providing a ton of pro bono services that are a very significant economic cost to this community.
It does not take long to rack up the costs, and that particular individual required nearly 550 EMTSA transportations and more than 360 police vehicle transportations over the last seven to 10 years. So he has cast a system well over a million dollars in terms of just one individual. He's not even being treated within the system, either.
Skip?
Plus, one of the concerns I have is that, although I find this rather comprehensive, but it seems as if there was a challenge in reference to the demographics of the individuals as far as the total study. And the other question I have is, is that were there any way to break down the actual services provided based upon the diversity of individuals in the city?
I'm not sure. Jill, if you...
We did collect information from the different providers about their demographics and who they were serving, but we were not able to compare across, we couldn't aggregate it because we kept, we got too many sources, too many different kinds of data. So we were afraid that anything that we said might be misleading. So we can share with you what we've got, but we didn't put it in the report because it just, it was too, there wasn't enough match for the, for the statistics. We do not have, unfortunately, really good data on the individuals that we're serving. We have, we were able much better to get the dollars than we were to get the portrait of the individuals, which was one of the things that we tried to do. It was, one of our, one of the goals that we had was to get a better picture of who we were serving. We just weren't able to do it.
I think part of the difficulty is we had to rely on data from a whole bunch of different agencies who provided that, and they all keep data or keep track of their information relating to how they treat homeless in different ways. So it would have been hard, as Jill said, to aggregate that data and be able to get something meaningful across the entire intent of this study. I think there's possibility with the West Town Center that we can begin to start to collect that data now.
Is there an accepted definition as to what is and the, as far as your department and the federal government, as to what is homeless? I mean, what defines an individual as being homeless?
Well, there is, there is a definition included in the report, and it's somebody who is not in permanent, permanent housing, that is spending the night in an emergency shelter. I'm not what the, forget the other couple of rush, but this is the accepted definition that we use throughout everything that we provide, at least with the homeless, and is what is accepted by the federal government. So we do try to keep that uniformity there. What were the other?
Of course, the other definitions include those who are in places not meant for human habitation, like at the transit station under the bridge, not anywhere that has a roof over their head. So we have incorporated all of that, and the federal government does include emergency shelter as considered to be also homeless.
And the reason why I ask is because I think that this whole issue of the demographics and the diversity, it comes from communities, and that when you don't identify issues that exist in various communities and trace it back to the various family that the individual comes from in that community, then you really are going to continue to... comes from in that community, then you really are going to continue to spend this $8 million and more if you don't ever try to start tracing the causation of a lot of these individuals' issues. And I asked that the definition, I don't think that the definition has, that it applies to individuals who are sleeping under bridges. I think that there's a lot of individuals who fall into the category, who come from good backgrounds that ultimately have some challenges in their life, that social services and other providers are not there for them, and the resources that they need in order to get those services creates a continuation of a downfall in reference to their life, and ultimately, they could be in that situation of sleeping up under the bridge. But I think that there's a lot of money that we spend out here that we don't really address to the actual causation. You know, when I look at these numbers and you look at the amount of money that's spent on legal, you look at the amount of money that's spent on education and law enforcement and emergency shelter, it's like, you know, we're going to continue to just throw money away to keep somebody a job, but we're not really addressing the real problem.
Councilman Kelly, I totally agree with you. There are certainly many causes of homelessness. We have pointed out in other times before you that there is no one distinct definition that covers everybody that ever becomes homeless. Certainly, like anything else, the face of homelessness has changed. It is not always what you consider just the man hanging out on the street corner. It's now become families who are falling on hard economic times. Has nothing to do with they're not productive citizens, but it certainly can be a cause for anyone in this room. Something could happen in your life to cause you to lose your housing. So we are trying, attempting to take a look at all of that and begin to address how we can help, best help families prevent their homelessness.
Anybody else comment or question, for Russell or Jane? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on 11A, on the homelessness? Do we need to accept that? No vote necessary. Okay, we're on to item four then. This is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for August 17th, and item B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for August 3rd. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, there's a couple this morning, starting on page 15. On 15, item six, AV3, Confession of Judgments, we'd ask that this be continued for two weeks until September 14th. On page 22, under item eight, I1, item C, 4900 South Drexel, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. On the page 23, item P, 2801 Northwest 11th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Owner has secured. Item W, 1720 Southwest 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Owner has secured. And item double I, 2709 Northwest 62nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured. And then on page 25, under Claims for Denial, item eight, M1. Item G, Daniel Hooker, we'd ask that that be deferred for two weeks until September 14th. And item K, Shantae Incorporated, also, we ask that that be deferred two weeks until September 14th.
September 17th.
September 17th, thank you.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, recess the council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are seven items.
Mayor, just a question on B.
B is in boy?
Yes, one and two, and not specifically about the streets. It's just, it's two large street widening projects, and I know these are just for design, first phase design. Are we still including sidewalks in all our street widening projects, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Your Honor, I'd have a question on the same two projects. If there's any sense of the timing, since we're turning the engineering loose right now.
Mr. Clowers?
My guess, I don't know specifically, I'd be glad to get you that information. My guess is that they're, we're probably looking at somewhere in the next two years to go to construction on these two.
Because it says in the write-ups that the projects are now fully funded, so I guess we can go ahead and get it scheduled and begin to work on that. So thank you very much.
And fully funded, it's authorized in the 2007 bond issue, all the bonds have not been sold at this point in time?
All the bonds have been sold?
Have not been sold at this point in time.
So it's not really fully funded yet in terms, we don't have the money in hand.
It's authorized but not funded, yes, sir.
Ready to vote on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. The G R O C MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Wonder if it wouldn't be a good idea to vote on A, C, D, and E as one group, and then we'll discuss the opportunity for the Grand Prix separately. Everybody have a problem with that?
All right, have a second.
Cast your votes on A, C, D.
I may ask a question on E, Your Honor, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
How much does this service cost the city? We pay them some money and they give us some rebates back, and I wonder what the net cost of the city was. I think it's a valuable service, I'm not criticizing, I was just curious as to what it actually costs.
I don't know if I have, I don't have the numbers on that, Ms. Frann.
We'll get back to you on that. It's no hurry, I just was, I'm saying, idle curiosity, Your Honor.
All right, we're voting on item A, C, D, and E of the PPA. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now deal with item B, and this is the much anticipated opportunity for Oklahoma City to consider a Grand Prix race. Trent, you and Brad and whomever else you'd like to bring forward could come up. I'll say upfront that I don't remember an issue in which the council has been more engaged and more open-minded over a very significant issue, and I think we want to be very respective of the opportunity that's before us. We realize how big of an undertaking you all are willing to take for us, and in these economic times, I think you understand that we have to be ever so diligent about the dollars that come out of City Hall. So regardless of how this relationship goes forward, I think you all should know how much we appreciate the work that you put into this thus far on the citizens of Oklahoma City's behalf. Trent, Brad, go ahead.
I appreciate that, Council, Mayor, City Manager. I'd like to back up a little bit and go back to March 9th, and remember that we came to the council and passed a resolution unanimously to start on our contract talks with the city, through the city manager, and in that process, we have gone about our duties in the correct protocol, we believe. And so we went through Project 180, were approved for our plans through Public Works, which then went on to Tom Anderson, and he began the contract negotiations with us through Keith McFall. And that would have been around the 1st of May that we started those contract negotiations. And so it was a process that we took very serious in that we were under the assumption and the willingness to go into this contract in the 1st of July. And so we moved along our business as swiftly as possible. Untold circumstances have moved us back, and now we're to this point, and the series has suffered somewhat from this delay, as well as we have, in that we had set our performance to start collecting sponsorships in July. And so we're in somewhat of a crunch on whether this is going to proceed or not. And so I just wanted to go back over some of the points that I'm not 100% sure have been made public to the council, or if they were just overlooked, some underlying things, is that we are going to pay about $1 million in our contract back for street improvements in the city. And that's just on the front side. On a yearly basis, we have about $190,000 to fix anything that is damaged, and we're going to carry the insurance on that also. We are also, on top of what we are going to be paying back to the city, which is a set fee of $1.38 million a year, which pays down on the annual and the capex, which we have full intentions of paying out 100% on both of those, which, to my understanding, is a very unique circumstance for a sports entity to pay back 100% on. On top of that fee, there's a $213,000 tax estimation that would come straight to the city, which we believe is a very low number. I'm not sure exactly what calculations were used to get that direct number to the city when you're working off a $30 to a $40 million direct impact to the city to come up with the cash number of 213. I know that there's a way that Tom went through this, and he worked through the correct numbers to get to that number, but we believe that is low. And just to reemphasize that, the payment that we're asking for, the $6.9 million, is not a cash payment to us. We are not asking the city just to fund our race. We're going to pay $7 to $8 million a year on our race ourselves. The $6.9 million is basically to build our infrastructure for our course, and that infrastructure holds a value, and that value can, those assets can then be resold. And so they carry, to us, the risk is really about a $1.5 million risk, not a $6.9 million risk, because of the residual value of the assets. And so I think that far decreases what we've been told is one of the major concerns, which is the upfront money risk to the city. And so with our $600,000 payback on capex, that's more like a three to three-and-a-half year payback with the residual value added into the city. And so I want it to be known that we are not asking for cash upfront and then just going to go and run our business with the city's money, that this is money to build a stadium. And instead of a $300 million racetrack, we're building a $6 million track that can then be resold. And this is a liquid asset in that, three months ago, we had the opportunity to purchase used assets, and since that time, those assets have since been sold. And so we are on new assets, which I think is okay because we're making some regulations that those assets, the used ones, may not have been perfect for us, and we would have had to re-up at some point on those anyway. And with the new assets, we'll be under the correct guidelines. But just on the economic side, is that our assets do carry a value. We are paying back a flat fee to the city. It's not a performance-based fee off of how many people we get into the gates, and we are absolutely committed to this. We've put a lot of time and a lot of money already into this project, believing that it would be very, very successful. I have standing my right, probably the best sports person in Oklahoma City. He's got more, more experience than anyone has, and he's been able to compile a team of five other employees that is above and beyond anything that I could have hoped for employee-wise. And so we are a business ready to go and ready to function if we can pass through today. And I appreciate all of the time that's been put on this.
Trent, one of the issues that the council's going to have to address, if we move forward on this and to continue talking about the finances and trying to nail down the finances and then start the undertaking of trying to get a route that we can develop a consensus that works, is that frankly, I don't think your current route, the ones that the engineers came up, I don't think that works for me.
Sure.
But I think we might be able to come to an agreement on a route. I'm willing to move forward on that part of the discussion. But there's been different recollections and rumors about whether or not the corporate community in Oklahoma City was behind this, whether or not you had widespread support. Because obviously, if this race is not going to succeed, then the council's going to be less inclined to want to support it long-term. I have no question about your numbers about how many people show up. Downtown Oklahoma City is going to be full. You say 80,000 to 120,000, that's, I buy that. But it's going to take more than just people buying tickets, it's going to take corporate support from Oklahoma City. So what can you say about the solidarity of the leadership of the city that typically supports events like this?
I would say that, I can't reveal our partners at this time. We've said that we would not, but we do have corporate support. I've talked to people within the last week of what I believe to be very influential people in Oklahoma City overall, and have had 100% support from all of those people. Haven't had a naysayer that I have talked to in the last week yet. And so our corporate support is very strong. In selling this originally to the American Law Series, that was one of the pieces, along with the ability for the city to work with the corporate community, was one of our strongest selling pieces to the American Law Series. And it was one of their recommendations, and they basically mandates that if you don't have city buy-in, this isn't going to work. Because it's a process that's, that you have to be able to work through all of the issues on. And so I was 100% confident at that time that we would have buy-in from the city because of the impact that we will have on the citizens and the city as a whole.
Well, your confidence that you have the business community behind you, it validates what I'm hearing, that you have solid support, but if we go forward on this and talk for the next 30 or 60 days, we're probably going to need some names. I mean, we're going to need to know that the major players that make these types of events successful are on board. I don't know that we necessarily need the numbers, but we need to know that corporate Oklahoma City is behind this, because, I mean, that's the group of people that have legendarily made this in a great event city. And if they're split, then I think that the event has less success. But we'll take your word for it now, because it's what I'm hearing too, but if we go forward, I think we're going to need to be more comfortable down the line. Brad, you want to add anything?
Mayor Cornet and Council, I would love to reveal our founding partners standing here. Contractually, we are not allowed to. We have not been able to enter into concrete, formal agreements, other than LOIs, until we have an agreement with the city of Oklahoma City. I am highly confident that our founding partners will be individuals and companies that the entire council is very comfortable with, and all based in Oklahoma City, and many of the familiar faces associated with other pros' teams in town. I will briefly say that, I go back to 1992, I don't know if you'll even know this, but the city initially turned down pro hockey returning to Oklahoma City. And God love a man named Alan Coles, he didn't want to give up, and through Mayor Newark at the time, they came back with another proposal, and it barely passed. And I took the job at 26-years-old, and even my own mom said I'd be unemployed come Christmas time. Many of the council thought I was crazy for taking the job, and as you all know, it's one of the great success stories in the history of minor league sports. Why do I bring that up? Because Oklahoma City is different. And I've been very fortunate, over the past two decades, to serve in an executive capacity in that role. When Mayor Cornet and I brainstormed this three years ago, four years ago, even a year ago at this time, this sounded about as crazy as the NBA coming to town. Yet, through my due diligence, there is no question this market is ready for its second major league entity. I learned a long time ago, in the hockey business and in the tennis business, and especially in the bull riding business, Brad, don't worry about everyone else's markets, worry about your own market. Why do I still live here today? Because I truly believe it's the premier special event sports market in the country. I would have said that prior to the NBA come to town, and I did say that. I won't go through the history, whether it's NCAA, Big 12, bull riding, tennis, golf, the list goes on and on. And I'll close with this, I would tell the council and all taxpayers out there that may have concern about the long-term success of the event, when George Shen and his executive team rolled into town and were evaluating different markets across North America to temporarily place their franchise, all I said to Mr. Shen, I said, "Mr. Shen, I don't know how well you'll do in Oklahoma City, but I can promise you, you won't fail." And I believe very strongly with the same standpoint here. I have many weaknesses. I don't know why I was born with one gift, and that is hiring good people. I've always gotten very lucky in assembling a great staff, not that it works for me, but works with me. Many of them are here with their families and their babies. The current staff assembled, from full-time employees to professional services, it is major league. The success of this event will be determined upon how our staff hits the streets, and the way that it's marketed, presented, and in the community spirit. I want to stress, this is a full-time, 365-day-a-year business. All hires to date, and most hires moving forward, will be local. So this impacts dozens of Oklahoma Cityans and people that are very, very talented in this particular industry. Thank you.
Brad, what other markets are, what are other markets saying is the economic impact of a race like this on an annual basis?
You know, in the past, I never paid much attention to... You know, in the past, I never paid much attention to economic impact. I didn't understand it. I certainly don't understand the indirect economic impact. But something that's unique, right from the get-go, we went market to market to market on what is your economic impact. It was $25 to $40 million in our collateral. We've used the number 30. I don't remember any of them being below 20. This group of people spend money. It is a demographic that is not afraid to stay at the finest hotels in town. I've been told by our peers that this will set hotel records on this side of the state, not just downtown, not just out on Meridian or by the airport. It will set records in the state. 20 to 40% of the 100,000 you talked about are expected to come from outside the metro area and stay overnight in a hotel room, a camper, a tent at a friend's house. So it definitely is unique, probably much more different than any event, you know, this city's ever hosted, as far as that goes.
Okay. All right. We may have you guys back up, but anything else you want to say at this point?
No, I just appreciate. Any questions I can answer?
Hang tight, I got a feeling there'll be some questions or comments.
Okay.
Yep. Anything else you want to say?
You brought up the track for a second, and I know that we're hoping to be able to push that to our next set and put a committee together to work on it. But part of an urban track is that it is movable and it's not set in stone. And so it is, it becomes much easier to work around issues that are coming up or are going to be, and so the track is a movable track.
Right, okay. Thanks, Trent. And if we do move this issue forward, we will be setting up a committee to specifically look at the route and to work with the downtown business owners, all of the entities that have a stake in this going forward. I think the viability of the race is enhanced if it can be held in some aspect of downtown. But I think it remains to be seen if it can, and there are other options outside of downtown. That might change the mechanics of the business part of the deal, but nonetheless, it's still, all of those, all of those things need to be addressed. And so an affirmative action by this council today will not set in motion a race to take place next July fourth, but it allows the conversation to continue on both the business side and the routing side. I think all of us have concerns in each of those areas. I'd like to ask the city manager to talk about the negotiation and his goal in the negotiation with the group. A few months ago, this started when the council approved the city manager to begin engaging with this group about the idea of putting on a race. And with the council's history and an input, and I think the city manager realized that we like zero subsidy when opportunities present themselves. And I think Jim kind of went into it with that as his goal.
Thank you, Mayor. When we went forward with this, we looked at different types of models to go forward with, sharing of the risk and having some upside potential and different models that were out there. We looked at the Hornet model we did a few years ago. And we actually settled on what we call the Berens model. This is the hockey team that will begin play in October. And the way that general model works is that we invest certain amount of capital into the Cox Center to provide facilities for them, and then they pay us back through different revenue sources, our direct costs, and enough money to amortize the debt on those capital improvements. And that's essentially what we've done here. We actually began the negotiations with taking percent of the tickets and percent of concessions, and we talked about percent of the advertising and such, and, you know, getting into that, it got kind of complicated. And we looked at, you know, how we're going to audit all this and any aspects of it. And we actually settled upon what we call a development fee concept where they will pay us a development fee, and it's totally estimated right now, $1.38 million. That, in conjunction with direct sales tax that will come off this event. And we look at that as if the event didn't happen, that sales tax wouldn't exist. That sales tax on a ticket, that sales tax on the concessions, and the direct things available to, attributed to the event would generate about $211,000 or $213,000, excuse me. And the combination of those two amounts will pay us back our direct costs and service the debt on the capital improvements that are required of $6.9 million. Now, we've amortized that over a 10-year period. The term of the agreement is a five-year period. And so you're, well, how does that work out? Well, what we end up with is that we have, as Mr. Ward pointed out, we have some value to that track asset. And we believe that at the end of that five-year period, if it does not continue, that the residual value of those assets will pay off the unamortized value of the loan. And so that's how we're looking at it. The further it goes, then obviously the value of the assets remains and the unamortized value goes down with time. And so that's how we generally structured. They pay us a fee. That, along with the direct sales tax revenue on top, estimated by 213, I think it was Mr. Ward said that that was a pretty conservative estimate, one of them said that. And I would agree with that. I think that is a conservative estimate. It may exceed that, but I wasn't looking at it being very aggressive with those estimates as we put this.
We get sales tax on tickets in this issue, don't we?
Yes.
Okay. Which is unlike what we have with the minor league baseball team or the NBA.
That's correct.
We do not get sales tax on tickets. And this time, we would get sales tax on tickets.
That's correct. And so that was all put into the calculations. And so that's the basis. I do want to point out that that's based upon $6.7 million in capital putting in. You know, if we can find some used assets or something out there, that amount could go down and then we would anticipate that their developer's fee would be adjusted appropriately with this. So this is a, this is a letter of intent based upon our best estimate right now as to what the capital requirements are for a course. Now, as the course changes with time, those capital requirements will have to be modified. And that will all be formalized as to what those capital improvements will be and exactly what the development fee will be by the time we come up and agree on the course and finalize the final agreement.
If a councilperson doesn't like the deal as it's stated in the literature you've given us today, is there reason to go forward? Is there still room to discuss and talk about how the numbers should be changed? Or is this, is this a set deal? In other words, what's the typical protocol in the situation?
Well, this is a letter of intent. This is the framework. What we're looking for today is for validation that this concept is agreeable and to go ahead and fill out the, put the meat on the bones of the agreement itself, identify the course, and fine-tune the numbers.
Okay.
It's to prove the concept, basically. And again, if that's an unacceptable concept, we'd be happy to.
But it doesn't approve anything specifically. We're not, if we vote yesterday, we haven't, we haven't committed ourselves financially in any way.
No, that's right. This is the letter of intent. And this is, by the way, the same process we did with the Berens. We approved a letter of intent on that and then went ahead and finalized the agreement. And it's actually also what we did with the Thunder, if you recall. We had a letter of intent that actually the league bought off on before we went ahead and finalized the agreement for the Thunder. So that's the concept we've used on some recent.
One of the reasons I think this is so different is that what we're doing here is we're being asked to construct a venue. And this is one of the, from a business model perspective, one of the things that has always appealed to me about a grand prix race, because when you start looking at trying to host a really big event in your city, and maybe you start at the top and you say, well, how do you get a Super Bowl? How do you get the World Cup to come to your city? It starts with creating a venue. Those venues cost hundreds of millions of dollars to construct if you're talking about a Super Bowl or a World Cup. In the case of Arlington, Texas, it was a billion dollars. And there's hundreds of millions of dollars of public money in that stadia. And so here you have, you know, an NBA All-Star Game coming and the Super Bowl coming, but hundreds of millions of dollars invested. What a grand prix race allows you to do is to have a really big event, not the Super Bowl, not the World Cup, but a really big event on a venue that you use your own infrastructure that you already bought and paid for. And so compared to the hundreds of millions of dollars that these stadia cost to construct, you have a relatively small amount of money that's spent. Significant money, especially in these economic times, I grant you, but a small amount of money, especially compared to the payback of the size of the event. If you go back 10 years and you start looking at where we were then and where we were now, first of all, none of us were up here, not one of the 11 that are seated here today were sitting in these chairs 10 years ago. But we've undergone a number of risk-related opportunities just like this, and the city manager mentioned a few of them. The riskiest was the Hornets deal. $10 million of exposure, as I recall. We're an unproven market. We had six weeks to sell tickets, and the team had won 13 games the year before. It exceeded to such an extent that we wound up getting a check from the NBA when the season ended. I don't know of any other city in the country that's ever gotten a check from the NBA. But we took a big risk. We have entered into similar agreements, as he mentioned, with the Berens, the hockey team, but I think the risk has been less, obviously less than the Hornets, maybe greater than what we're looking at today, but obviously less than the Hornets. We entertained the AAA baseball team with virtually no risk. The stadium has been constructed, it was a $30 million stadium, maybe worth twice that today, but we don't have any operational responsibilities to speak of. The team assumes all the risk going forward. Where I think this one starts to be different is it's the nature of the sport. It's not football, it's not basketball, it's not baseball, it's not hockey, it's not one of the traditional four sports. And so you start to look around the country and you're saying, well, what is the level of risk and how has it worked in other markets? And it's kind of a checkered history if you look at the other markets. It's succeeded incredibly well in Palm Beach, Long Beach, California. They're still holding races in St. Pete's, doing extremely well there. But you look at other markets and you think, well, what happened in Detroit? What happened in Dallas? What happened in Houston? Why, if this is such a grand idea, why didn't it happen? I think you have to look at those situations. Detroit, in trying to support all four of those major league sports, couldn't support a grand prix race. That doesn't surprise me. They couldn't support General Motors, you know, at the end of the day. The idea that Detroit couldn't support a race, I don't think should be indicative that this sport can't work in Oklahoma City. In Houston and in other places like Washington DC, they've tried to run these in the parking lots of stadiums, in the parking lot of the Astrodome in Houston and in the parking lot of RFK Stadium in Washington DC. You might get a curiosity factor the first year you hold a race in a place like that. People aren't going to come back year after year to a stadium parking lot. I don't believe in large numbers. I think you need that downtown component if you're going to have a race that is going to go on and on and on and be successful year after year. So I think that, to me, one of the levels of risk that we take is that it's just, it's a little bit of an unusual deal. And if you start trying to draw comparisons around the country, you can kind of make a case either way you want to go. And at the end of the day, we kind of have to draw upon our own experiences and look at what we think. And I believe that the motorsports market in Oklahoma City is extremely under-tapped. Have no way of proving it. We've never held an event of any significance to be able to tap into what I believe is a huge opportunity. There are NASCAR tracks that are worth hundreds of millions of dollars in the Dallas market and also in Kansas City. We're not going to get a NASCAR track. I've looked into it. We've tried. It's not going to happen here. Our entry into motorsports is going to need to be in a grand prix-type race like this. But I think we would draw from those two markets and certainly the Oklahoma City market itself would support this in numbers that it's hard to even for us, I think, to imagine today. And I think the numbers that they're suggesting is, although it sounds hard to believe that over a three-day period, 80,000 to 120,000 people could come downtown, I think that's very doable, if not conservative. Another aspect of this is it's not just the three days of racing. In visiting in Long Beach and talking to that community about what a week-long festival of speed, as they call it out there, does, there's a number of other events. The idea that the Fourth of July is available to us on the calendar is an opportunity that if we were going to just pick a date, I don't know that we could find a better date on the calendar to help again make this successful. This event is set up to succeed. It has the support of outstanding people on the promotion side, has a completely under-tapped market from a motorsports aspect. We've been offered the premier racing weekend on the Le Mans calendar in the Fourth of July situation. And what we have to decide is in these economic times, can we, can we take the level of risk that this opportunity presents? And based on what I've heard so far, I think it's important that we do. I think the economic development that's going to be generated by this race is important to our economy. We've got to continue to invest to continue to grow our economy. We have expenses down the line, we have expectations by citizens of increased public safety. We're going to have to continue to grow the sales tax base by making investments like this. And I want to compliment the city manager for negotiating such a, such a good deal. We can, we can vote this up or down, but the idea that an opportunity like this is going to come again, I think is probably not realistic. This is a, this is a good deal the city manager's been able to negotiate for us. It may not be the deal we want, but it's not likely to ever get better than this with all of the reasons that I've, that I've mentioned about why this particular opportunity for 2011 and going forward is, is I think, an opportunity we ought to seize. We have one person who has signed up to speak. We want to hear from that person and then we'll let council start weighing in. Phil, if you could keep your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. We will need your name and address for the record.
Phil Sipe, President, Oklahoma City Firefighters Association. Won't be, will take me very long, Mayor.
Thanks.
I support racing too. I'm a big fan of it. Many of the firefighters that I represent support racing. A lot of them will come to the race, and I appreciate your efforts to bring it here. I'm merely trying to point out that, that this may not be the best time to do it. We've cut 100 positions from the city, 100 positions, management, ASME, police and firefighter positions have been eliminated from the city for fiscal year 1011. That's, that's a lot of savings on the part of the city that they needed in order to balance the budget as, from your perspective. And I understand that, but it's not clear that this event will turn a profit. I think many people read the newspaper over the weekend. Some of the cities that had this event, that have had a similar event like this have lost money on it. It only lasted a year or two and it went away. So, and I don't want to leave the impression that the firefighters are against, you know, an event like this or progress. We're not. Again, the firefighters will probably support this strongly if you decide to go follow through on it. And I understand it's merely a letter of intent at this time, but $6.9 million is a lot of money to justify when we went through those kinds of budget cuts recently for fiscal year 1011. So I'm asking you to just wait on the issue. Wait till the economy improves, wait till a better time to do this, and just think about it a lot more in depth and consider it a lot more in depth before you move forward with this decision. Thank you.
You bet. I imagine everybody's going to want to weigh in on this. Sam, you raised your hand first. Do you want to weigh in?
Probably, Mayor, because my comments are going to be more general, I think, than others. Just listening to you this morning, on the matter of risk, Mayor, and really trying to listen, you're very persuasive. And if it were just for me weighing the risk, you'd probably move me over. But for me, what's gone beyond the risk and my concern for this, and what I voiced to you Friday in my call, was, is the responsibility we have before we even consider the risk. There's some awfully good people we've all heard from. People stood at the podium, Brad and Trent, local people, good, solid people. None of us know yet the exact names of those corporate underwriters and sponsors, but Lord knows, we've heard from a lot of them. A lot of them are here this morning. And they're good people that are wanting the best for Oklahoma City. I just want to say to all the good people that four months ago, when we got into budget, serious budget considerations, two months, as recent as two months ago in approving a budget, we asked the departments across the city to take a 12% cut. No time in recent history have we asked our departments, our city, to take those kinds of draconian cuts. So at a time like that, and a time so recent as that, that in the last couple of months, we've been able to cobble together for a worthy intent to move forward, $7 million to put up front. To me, Mayor, just lies in the face of responsibility we have in our budget setting. And to be able to go through that And to be able to go through that process and ask what we did of the departments and the people and the personnel and then to say to the public, in some way in these last two months, we have found or we will find $7 million to upfront this, to me, it stops there. I start to lose understanding of weighing the risk and moving forward because I can't get past that basic fundamental question.
But you understand that a no vote doesn't restore a single position?
Understand.
Okay. Sure.
Within this, within our research, we are going to be creating what is in between 100 to 200 jobs just on the setup and takedown process of this, regardless of what our staff is. And so there is another economic impact that's put onto that in an actual, real-life situation where we're going to be hiring, or the city will, through their contracts, 100 to 200 people of jobs that we'll be creating through this event, which in turn drives the economy on top of that.
Okay. Good point. Larry?
I'm not going to, I agree with what Sam said totally, but I'm just going to share my perspective. Y'all can debate it, you can tar and feather me, but from a business perspective, when I evaluate, when I used to be a chief financial officer and when I evaluate the rendering of credit to a company, I was taught to look at two things. The person's ability to pay and the person's willingness to pay. And based on that, I made a business decision, not always right, of whether to extend credit or not. What we're being asked to do here is extend $7 million in credit to an organization. So I applied the same model to that. And the model I came up with from a willingness to pay, I believe that these gentlemen are very, very, very willing to pay off the $7 million that they want the city to advance. But from an ability to pay and looking at the figures and then applying this question, if this is such a great deal, why has it not been taken to a bank or private investors and have them fund it rather than the city? I come away with the fact that the risk is just too great. And Mayor, I'm sorry, you made a statement that you asked the question, is there any working of this deal from a financial standpoint or of what we see today, the essence of what we're going to see if we decide to move this along with a letter of intent? And based on that, quite frankly, I'm going to vote no today. I just don't see this as a good business model.
Pete, you want to say anything?
I'm not.
Okay. Meg?
I guess I may take a slightly contrarian position here and I think we're all working very, very hard to identify economic development opportunities. I mirror some of Larry's comments. I was a banker in a former life and I'm a little, I think this is a significant risk that we're being asked to take. And I think most simply, my position this morning would be, I'd like to try to advance the conversation. I have many, many questions. Trent and Brad both understand that I'm concerned about the location of the track. I think we have a lot of work to do. I've talked to many, many folks. I've never gotten so many, I thought chickens generated a lot of email. The Grand Prix really generated a lot of emails. And I think in terms of maybe balancing, I was probably 65 in favor and 35 not. Strong supporters on both sides. Citizens very concerned about the city advancing these kinds of dollars, but many of our citizens so enthusiastic about the opportunity of bringing a world-class event like this to the city. So I'm concerned about saying no today and not allowing those questions to be answered and asked. And I think, I guess I particularly would like to mention Downtown Oklahoma City, who's had lots of these conversations and I've been given authority to say on behalf of that organization, they are supportive of trying to make this work, but want to be very clear that they also have a lot of questions that haven't been answered. But I'm just concerned that if we say no today, we've shut down an opportunity for a July 4th event that could really put Oklahoma City on the map.
Skip?
One of the concerns, I kept hearing the word that we will have an investment in reference to the staging, that it can be sold. How do you sell a street that we already have, it's owned by the citizens of the city? What authority would we have to put that out for any kind of sale?
Generally, it would be the assets we're doing to put up the course. And that's a lot of it is the barriers and the fencing that we have to go up. The concrete barriers and the fencing is the majority of what we're talking about there, which would be somewhat liquid and available for resale.
But who would we sell it to?
Well, that was a case from a course from, I think it was Las Vegas, it just sold within the last month. And they got actually a pretty good price for it. It was a little bit remarkable.
Did Baltimore buy it?
I think it may have been.
Yeah, I think Baltimore. Baltimore's racing next year. They bought the track from Las Vegas, is what I heard.
There is other cities that are looking into this. Our track designer is probably the preeminent track designer in the US right now and he is on constant calls to cities. In fact, he was back in Las Vegas and working on a track that they're trying to get through the middle of their strip, down the middle of the Las Vegas Strip. And so there is other cities and there is some liquidity to that market.
Well, I think that we all are faced with a major issue of perception. And we just came out of a very traumatic weather incident this summer. And I don't know how many calls I get from people who are complaining about the fact that their streets are not open, that they can't get their streets repaired, that the response we get from public works is that there's no funds available right now to repair in these areas. And at the same time, we can magically find ways to create a upfront funding source for a project that in essence, I don't care how you look at it, it's a gamble. And in a time in which we have asked, as has been stated, that our hind freeze, people's salaries, positions not being filled, and now we will look at a way in which we can create this much money or find this much money to a private entity. The perception that I have from people that I represent is that we will do this for the big corporations, but we won't do this for the little everyday people who have to get up every morning and come down here and make sure that the toilets flush in people's houses and that the streets are in a way that they can get from point A to point B. The downtown issue, and I raised this issue when I first had the meeting, about how do we justify the 180 project and rush, obviously, to get it completed and then to be able to say to the people that are downtown business people that we use this for this event and to intrude on the business district. It just seems like that, you know, this whole process is being rushed too much on us. I think it's being rushed too much for the public. And, you know, I don't know what the magic date is of March, July the 4th of 2011. I've asked that question and it's like, you know, well, it has to be that date. And I want to know, why does it have to be July the 4th of 2011?
A series is like the PGA Tour. And so they only have so many openings on their calendar over a calendar year. And this is a worldwide sport. It will be, our marquee race will be the American Le Mans Series. This happened to be a weekend that was available. And I do want to stress, from our standpoint, we've been up and running since January. So when Trent says we're ready to go, that's literal. Even the outpouring that we had over this past weekend of rush of activity for ticket sales was staggering. I mean, I won't put it in the thunder category, but it was just staggering. So from an organizational standpoint, we are very much ready to go from our end in our conversations with Mr. Couch and his staff. These have been ongoing, daily, weekly, monthly. City staff has gone to Long Beach, which we would like to model our race after. To answer your question about why is the city providing this for a private entity, I want to stress that the money is not coming to us. They're providing the arena, the stadium, no different than providing it for the sports teams or providing the city for the marathon or the drag boat races. It's the same type of concept. It's your grounds. We have to have your approval to move forward in that area. So I, we were told in Long Beach, it'd be no different if the thunder bent the ears of people in San Antonio about how have you been successful with the Spurs? We've done the same with the Long Beach staff, from their mayor to their CBB, to their marketing people. And 100% what they stressed to us right from the get-go, with city staff present, they said, make your city your partner. If your city does not want to be your partner, this doesn't work. So this is true of partnership. And last thing I'll say, on the assets, we are going to have capital expenditures as well. We internally are responsible for all the bleachers, suites, chillets, restroom facilities. So it's not just marketing from our end. We've got significant upfront costs that we're incurring and not asking the city to provide from that standpoint.
Sure. Just a couple of things in that I'm hearing a sentiment of, well, we can move this to the next, sometime else. We can get this again. The mayor's been working on this project for five years. I came in and we formed this group in January. In that previous five years, nothing had happened. No traction had been made. In the last nine months, we've secured a sanctioning body, we've secured a race, an architect, and we've got a staff, we've got an office, we're ready to go. And so within nine months, we've done what the other groups couldn't do in five years. And so I think that it's not an opportunity that comes by every day. It's not something that we can say, oh, we'll just pass on this. But I think we'll do it next year. And 2011 holds some other key elements to me is that over Fourth of July weekend of next year, first of all, Fourth of July weekend, you have people looking for something to do. And it gives you a weekend for people to know, what do you do on Fourth of July weekend? We go to Oklahoma City. It's easily rememberable. And so over that weekend, it's next year, which gives us a grace period, I feel like. It's a Saturday, Sunday, Monday, the second, third and fourth is Saturday, Sunday, Monday. And we haven't been approved by the series to be on a Monday for our final race yet, but likely that we would be. And it gives us sort of a grace period within downtown. Go back to Project 180. I think that those are further conversations and we are very willing to talk about that. We have been given graces by Downtown OKC, which Meg referred to. And so I think that we are willing to work on the track and the date is not something that we can just say, okay, we'll just come back to this later. And on the risk side, to me, and we may have different perceptions on this, it's not a $6.9 million risk because the assets do hold the residual value. To me, it's more of a million and a half dollar risk. And I think that's a significant point.
Okay. Agreed. Yeah, Pat?
No, thank you. First of all, I like car racing. You go out in the parking lot across the street, you'll see a car that I think represents. I like fast cars, I like racing. I'm comfortable, I think, with the estimates the city manager's made about the future income coming from this project. And it's got a lot of traction, but I'm afraid, in my mind, this is an opportunity that we should have discussed a month ago. And then we could have had this meeting today based on what a final agreement looked like. And we've had this agreement, this draft, since Friday, I think, at least. I got my copy on Friday. It's the first time I knew about what the numbers were going to be like. And as good as this opportunity is, I think entities throughout their careers are offered opportunities that are good. And the question is, can I afford to take advantage of it? And I think in this economic time, no matter how good the opportunity may be, we can't afford to take advantage of it. We can't, I mean, if we can go out and find $7 million to invest in this with the residual value of the assets, then why can't we find $7 million to deal with some of our street problems in Oklahoma City? Why do we get back out of contracts with the county joint ventures because we can't have, we don't have $100,000 to pay for our share? And we can find $7 million through this project? And that causes me a great deal of heartbreak. And if, the best I could do would be to agree to defer this for two weeks or a month, however long it takes for the city manager and the applicants to get together and come up with a final contract that we can get. But if we're forced to go down today, I'll have to, you know.
Well, I don't know, how does that differ? How does a deferment differ from advancing the conversation with a yes vote?
Because we haven't given a tacit approval with a yes vote at this point. To me, there's a difference. And it may be a difference without extension, but there is a difference in my mind.
Well, let's let Trent speak to that. Trent, we don't want to mislead you. And I sense we've got a very tight vote here. So I'm wanting, I don't want any conversations to be had two hours from now that should be happening now. We don't want to mislead you by voting yes if we don't believe we're going to be able to get there in the end. And so you've heard Larry's concerns, you've heard Pat's concerns. Larry's concerns were basically about, I don't want to put words in your mouth, or maybe I will, some sort of a line of credit, willingness to pay, your concerns about, you know, in general, if those numbers don't change significantly, you can't support it in the end, and so you don't want to support it today, in basic. So how do you address that, Trent? If you think Larry should vote yes based on what you've heard, tell him why.
I do think that the risk aversion is greater on the reward side than it is on the risk side. I'm not sure what we can come up with in an extra payment to the city further than what we have proposed at this time. I feel like that we have taken on a lot more than we anticipated from the very beginning. We've taken on about $700,000 more on the city side than we had hoped to from the beginning. And so I don't know how much more economically we can take on and be a viable business in that. The letter of credit, I'm not willing to do that. I just don't see that that's a viable option on my side. I feel that my letter of credit has been that I've invested in this for the last nine months with the intent on it being a long-term viability and income for me. And so I don't see that that's going to happen. I also have a hard time with this in that we have been functioning the last two months out of what we had set in our pro forma. We were hoping to be able to sign off on our contracts on July 2nd. And knowing that we got into that late, we at least were working towards August 3rd, which we had an original date on the council for August 3rd. Some things changed that. We ended up with an August 17th and then those got changed also. And so moving forward without being able to take in sponsorships on a small company is hard. I don't know if it's a viable option for us or not.
Yeah, I have no question you're going to pay it back. Any other comments? Gary, Pete, did y'all want to say anything?
There's not one person on this horseshoe that hasn't voted in the past uniformly for projects that they thought moved this city forward. Not one. And some of us have had serious reservations. I see Mike Carrier's here from the CAC convention in tourism and he knows very well some of my reservations that I had when I voted for the last, for the MAX III project. But we have all found a way each time to overcome those risks, those obstacles that we perceived were obstacles to doing it. Each time that happened, though, we were at a different time in this city's history. The Barons contract, the Hornets contract, the Thunder contract were all entered into at times when it... at times when it, that different than the economic time we face today. They're just different times. With the situation we're in now, I, I don't see how I personally can vote for it. I would love to vote for it. I have never once not voted for things that I thought moved this city forward. In fact, I voted for some that I was concerned about in the past, that I wasn't 100 percent sure were the right thing to do, based on what I thought the collective wisdom of this group was and the people that made presentations. I still have some reservations about some of them as they, as they continue to move forward. So, my personal feeling is, and I've talked to a lot of you, John Brooks is a good friend, and John and I have talked, Don Karcher and I talked at length last night, Alan Payne and I talked at length last night about it. These are people that I respect their views, and they called me, but your dad called me. I talked to your father about it. These are people that I, that most of us would, would look to for, for guidance to some extent as we go forward. These are people we've listened to in the past. They're people that we've, that, that we have, in some cases, mine, I can only speak for me, and some, I've put aside some of my concerns based on being convinced by people that I thought their collective wisdom had to outweigh what I thought. But I can't do it in this case. I just flat can't do it. I, I will relate to you an incident that has occurred three or four times in the last month about this particular thing. A person would call me, and they would have, they would want to talk about two things. They'd want to talk about where the city's finding this money, and they would want to find, they would want to talk about their road, their street. And I would give them my best understanding of where the city, how, why the city can accumulate $7 million to do this with, and we can't accumulate the money to fix their road. And at the end of the, at the end of the conversation, before the guy hung up, in each occasion, and it was a man both times, the guy would say, "Well, when are you going to fix my street?" And it's because that argument about where the money comes from and how we're going to pay it back just goes right over the head of somebody who's driving in a pothole, whose whole, South Bryant, for example, a whole mile that's just, that we can't fix. I mean, at the end of that conversation, when that guy, he said, "Well, borrow, take this money that you're in fact borrowing and then pass a bond issue someday later and pay back the loan that you made to, that you're making to yourself and fix my road because I'm driving in a mile-long pothole." I, I gave up. I mean, I, I would love to be able to vote for it. I, I will tell you that. I would like to be able to be convinced that this is the right time. But as I look at what's happened in our, in our sales tax, the minor little ticks that are moving forward, we, we predict it'll be two or three years of those kind of upticks before we get back to where we were before we had, where the bottom fell out financially. Maybe it's higher finance than I can expect my constituents to understand, but it's high enough finance that they don't understand it. And they don't understand where, why, and how we can come up with this kind of money to do this kind of a project when we have, when we continue to articulate our financial problems on a bi-weekly basis now. I'd, I'd love to vote for it. I have never, this would be the first vote in my long, probably too long, according to some of you, tenure as a city councilman. This would be the first time that I have not been, been able to see my way clear to vote for something that I thought had the potential for being this positive for this city. And I, but I regretfully cannot find a way to vote yes.
I, I would like to just say what I, I would say to your constituents about this dollar figure. One, I don't know exactly where it's coming from. It's not my, my position to know that. Two is that I, I drive on a road of potholes myself. It's a county road, but it, it's full of potholes. But if they come and fix that pothole, to me, is, I'm going to go to, hey, a service saying, and they're giving me a fish. But in, investing into this project, we're essentially teaching us how to fish. And so, we'll have fish for, and so, we're creating money. If you fill that pothole right now, that money is gone. If you invest in this, there, there's a, a great potential for the money to be there for more potholes to be filled. And so, if I were in your position, what I would say is that that pothole is on Schedule 4 X, but this project, not knowing where the money's coming from again, will be creating money to be able to fill those.
Brett, I don't want to get in any situation. I debate you. I don't doubt your intentions at all.
Sure.
But if you were the businessman that owned a business on that road that is a pothole, you would disagree with that wholeheartedly. You would say, "That makes a difference to me. I generate income for this city. I create jobs for this city. My ability to do that is restricted by the fact that people have to drive through this ditch in order to get to my business." And, and I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get in. Now, we're in a debate, and I don't, that's not what I intended to do.
Sure. I didn't want to argue with all.
I, I intended to compliment the mayor and you on what you did, and I don't want to get into a debate about it. I'm telling you, if, if I could be convinced, the, the conversations I've had with the people that's, that either by email or by telephone, not, not the least of which is the mayor himself, who's obviously a big advocate for this project, and I, I understand that. I've named off several people that I consider to be leaders of Oklahoma City, that I value their views, and I still can't find a way to answer that question for that individual. I can understand what you, I, I know what you're saying. But if you operated a business on that ditch, you wouldn't be able to, you'd be just like him. You would say, at the end of the conversation, you would say, "When are you going to pay my street?"
Yeah.
And there's no good answer for that because I have to tell him that I can't get the money to pay this street until we do a bond issue, as Dennis has informed me several times, which will be several years down the road before we can even do another bond issue, and then several years after that before we start collecting the money. And so, this guy's, you know, he's not as old as I am, but he's old enough, he can't wait that long.
But could I offer a possible solution in that we offer on top of our $1,001,380, a 50 cent to a dollar payment off of every ticket sold back to a pothole fund that would go to split between the eight wards? And then, that, that loss to me is far less than the loss of the, the no vote. And so, I, I would be willing to give 50 cents to a dollar per ticket sold over the course of, for the life of the race to go into a pothole fund if, if we're able to move forward.
Okay. So, you're talking about if there's 100,000 people, you're talking 50,000 to 100,000 a year that could go to street resurfacing?
Nick, you know, it's, Mayor, I'm sorry. If you host a tennis tournament, your community service project would be to restore the public tennis courts. If you own a pro basketball team, your community service is to restore the basketball courts in the inner city. We go down the list. Trent, I think, was reading my mind in the fact that here we are a street race, so what should our community service project be? Let's fill the potholes. I mean, let's, let's find a way to not only create awareness, but have fun with it, whether it's 50 cents, a dollar a ticket. I, I think we could take that even to the next level and have that be our mission for the next decade, not just the next 30 days.
Okay. That's an idea we could explore if we went forward. Gary?
Kind of makes me wonder why I wasn't in the original ideas. But at the risk of sounding, being redundant, which we ask citizens not to do all the time, I'll just make a couple of comments. And I hope that we get a race in Oklahoma City. I really do. I hope that whether it be Le Mans or whatever race it may be, I think it would be successful in Oklahoma City, and I, and I hope a race comes here. I'm not wild about the route. In fact, I don't like the route, but I understand today is not the time to talk about a route. But I am in agreement with my fellow councilpeople who say that this is not the time to find $7 million like this. We're, they're asking the city to be the risk agent on something that if it's going to be so wildly popular, and they're convinced it's going to work, I can't figure out, as Larry would say, why a bank wouldn't loan them the money to do it. When does, when do we as the city get credit for doing the things that have made Oklahoma City a great place to be and a great place to come to and a great place to hold events so that somebody else takes that risk and we're able to capture new sales tax dollars and, and help the city grow and try to restore positions that we've laid off because we're not getting the tax dollars in? I, I just, I can't get there, and I, and I'm getting to be that way on a lot of things. We're, we're, we are in different times right now, as Pete said. It is a different time than risks we've taken before. And we have no, anybody on our staff gives us anything but forecasts that says it's going to take years to build back up to where we were three years ago, four years ago, whatever it was, regardless of what's coming in. And I'm just, I'm just to the point where I'm going to say, "You know what? We're doing our best to, to get by day to day as the city and do what we promised we would do in the past and get those things without taking on new risk and without being the risk agent for other people that want to come in here." If, we should have a city at this point in time that is attractive enough and the citizenry is attractive enough that things like this should be coming in here and somebody else should be taking that risk. And, and, and we will be a partner. You're not going to put on a race in Oklahoma City without the city being a partner of some kind, whether you do it on a city street and you need a permit, or whether you go buy the land and build you a track somewhere and you need the city's support for the infrastructure getting out to the track. There's going to be some way the city's going to be involved. There's no way we're not going to be a partner with however you get a race set up. I'm just like the rest of the council, and I can't get here on this package right now.
When did we do the Barron's deal?
Tom, can you tell me, help me out the timeframe on the Barron's deal? It was last fall, winter?
Okay. So, the fall of '09, when we were right in the midst of the recession as it affected Oklahoma City. It was really weaker times than today. And what I'm hearing is that people want to vote no somehow in defense of street repair, when a no vote doesn't repair a single street. In fact, a yes vote will apparently allow us to have a pool of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars certainly over time, to put into street repair. And no vote doesn't restore a single vacant position. Yet, I think there's some acknowledgement that this event has the opportunity to increase the size of the pie, increase the size of the economy where we can create jobs in the future. I don't get it.
Your honor, let me comment. I, I think you've got some good points there. If that's the case, why don't we send him back, the city manager and our, our voters, who I think are outstanding citizens? I have no question about their integrity and their commitment to our community. Send them back, and let's negotiate until we get a financial agreement that's acceptable. And let's defer this issue until we, we have that in hand. Because if we approve a letter of intent today, I think there's a tacit approval of the, of the concept, and it's just ironing out details. I don't think we've come to that point yet.
How would that change the parameters, though, of your reasons for voting?
Because the financial agreement could be modified, in my mind, to shift some of the expense from the citizens and this magical $7 million we've been able to find. You say we can't, no vote won't fix streets. Well, if we take that $7 million, vote no, then that's, that money's available to do something with it. If it's there, why don't we spend it? And so, I, I think if, if we can defer this for-
Pat, you know the answer. The answer is this is, this has an opportunity for repayment.
That's right.
And the assumption is that the $7 million doesn't have an opportunity for repayment directly in, in the manner you would want to spend it.
No, but it, it does fulfill the responsibility of our citizens to provide them adequate streets and service. And I think that's the important part. We, we get repaid every day when we do the things that are right for our citizens, the confidence they have in our city government. And I would hate to do anything that would chip away at the trust and the confidence that this city council, city administration, over the past many years, has been able to develop.
Okay.
Now, I'd like, I, I think this, this discussion, if it was held a month ago, would have been really right on target, and we could have given a timely answer. But I think we've waited to the very last minute.
Mm-hmm.
And we, we're, we're thrust in this, either vote yes or vote no. We have no options. If we can defer it for two weeks, let's, a new financial arrangement? Obviously, the financial arrangement is not satisfactory to the majority of the council.
Right. Well, let's find out if, if that would be worth the time and energy.
Might I, this is the counsel, Keith McCall, on behalf of the company. I've heard several things, and it goes back to what you're talking about, Councilman Ryan, and that is, there seems to be a lag in the council being caught up, they think, as to where we are currently in the proposal that we're making. And we understand that. We're hearing that fairly clearly today from the council. There's some concerns as far as the timing. Just to make sure you understand, we've been working diligently with city staff since, since May and March. We thought that we were working through the right process. But we're now hearing that you're not hearing enough information. You don't have enough information to make a valid decision at this point. The second thing that we're hearing is there's concerns about the financial capacity or ability to pay back this, this amount of money that would be advanced. I think what we'd like to do is defer this vote today, if it's okay with, with the council, and get together creatively with the council, spend two more weeks working on these issues that have been brought up. Work on the issue of being creative about the financial concerns, any assurances that we might be able to come up with. We've talked about some today. It's not really for them to come up and throw ideas at which we appreciate. But we'd like to defer this vote today to address the things we're talking about and bring you more up to speed to what you want to hear and what you need to know to make your decision. So, we're willing to do that if the council itself is willing to do that same, same decision.
Okay.
But I think we, we need to go into the idea that the financial arrangement as proposed today was obviously troublesome to the council. And so, the, the starting point for any future discussions is a modification of the financial arrangement.
We understand there's concerns regarding the current structure. We also need the council to understand that we have a very short window. We've been working very diligently with a sanctioning body, the American Le Mans Series. We pushed them back a couple of months, thinking the timing was, you know, different than it is today. So, we can only do this for about two more weeks before we lose that opportunity, just being real honest with you. We've worked with them. We have a contract ready to be signed with them. You know, it's contingent upon this contract. So, we're willing to do that. We're willing to work a couple more weeks, try and make you, give you some assurances, give you more information regarding this whole issue. And that's what we'd like to do, be given that opportunity. We don't want a no vote today without having talked all these issues through.
Okay. So, they're acceptable to a deferral? Yeah, Larry?
Now, I'd just like to ask one question, so you know where I'm coming from. In the reworking of the financials, is it possible that you can rework the financials, which will require zero money, whereas right now, you're looking at $7.9 million for the infrastructure? Because if you can't, then I, I see that as, in my mind, a potential deal breaker when I consider the thoughts of the other council. And I don't want to put, my thoughts on theirs, but, but they're saying this is not the time to devote any money from, from the city funds to this project. Is that possible?
No, I don't believe so.
And Mayor, I'm, I'm at the same position. It's, it's not a matter of trying to get more comfortable with the risk. It's, it is more fundamental in the sense of using money at, at this time, when we've done what we've done with this city budget. I just, I'm not able to get past, not even able to, want to talk about the track issues, as Gary said, I've got a whole lot of issues with. And I, I want to just say with, with response to who we hear from, Meg, I understand you had a number of emails and calls, and I was told Ward 2 had more. Mine broke out about the same way, about 60 percent in favor. Those, every one of those identified themselves as some business owner. The 35 percent identified themselves as Ward 2 constituents. It just was that clear. And it, and it was that fundamental as well. It wasn't about risk. It was about taking money at this time for this event.
Okay. Pat, do you want to make a motion on a deferral? And if there's any more discussion on the deferral, we can.
I would gladly make a motion, but I think Mr. McCall's comment pretty much took the need for deferral off the table, that they weren't able to consider even approaching this thing as a zero investment for the city. But I'll be glad to make the motion, but I do have that reservation that maybe this is not, you know, a worthwhile pursuit.
I, that, that is not an option, to be at zero risk or money from the city side. And so, if, if that is the determining factor today, I would rather have a vote than have a deferral of two weeks.
Okay. Was that the point of the deferral for you, your mind, to get rid of the, the city's risk on the $7 million?
The, the $7 million is a critical number, where it's came from and how it's being used. And if we can't get around that point, then I think the deferral is probably not in anybody's best interest.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, then? Any other comments or questions, then? We're going to need some sort of motion.
We need to make a motion.
You'll?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. You'll make a motion to vote yes, basically, to pass the move. Okay. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Motion fails.
What would the motion?
To approve.
To approve. The motion fails three to five. You want to vote again?
No.
Okay. Let's vote again, so everyone's vote is cast correctly. And the motion fails two to six. Thank you all. Well, adjourn the OCPPA, convene as Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There's one item.
Move the item.
Have a second? All right, cast your votes, and it passes six to two. Larry, you still voting against the EAT now? All right, eight to zero. Thank you. Adjourn OC EAT, reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. Have a motion?
We have a motion.
We have a motion and a second on the consent docket. We also have a presentation on item 68K. I'll ask Mike Carrier, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, come forward, along with Rhonda Hooper.
Now that the audience has left, we do have a presentation, and I just want to say that I'm Rhonda Hooper. I'm president and CEO of Jordan Associates. And I'm involved in a lot of things in the city on a volunteer basis, but probably the most rewarding is my chairmanship of the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Commission. And I'd like to recognize a couple of our prestigious council members, and that's council member, our councilman Gary Mars, and Cy Perkins, who is a hotelier. And then also represented from the staff for the CBB. There are several people here, and they make a difference. We're very proud of their efforts. You had a detailed report, and I won't bore you. This is 17 slides of highlights, and the highlights being that, basically, tourism in Oklahoma City is vibrant and growing, and it's contributing both to business receipts and tax revenues, and it is very important industry to the city. We are experiencing things in our city more so than in other parts of the United States. On an annual basis, 6.5 million people stop in Oklahoma County for different reasons, be it an overnight stay, or to get gas, or food, or whatever, and that contributes to our total revenues. Just some highlights. The overall performance, you can see that we had a 7% increase in our goal for secured room nights this past year, a positive. And it contributed over 414 million in direct spending in future conventions and events. And in terms of responding, in terms of our investment, for every dollar spent by the CBB budget, it returned $114 in direct spending, which is very, very important. On a national level, we kind of mirror what's happening in the hotels from the standpoint of what is going on. A national economist recently spoke and said that consumers are indeed still spending. However, they're prioritizing their spending. What used to be doing multiple things, now they're prioritizing it being for their children's education, fixing the car, buying a car, fixing up the house, or family vacations. Whereas they used to do a lot of things, now they're having to prioritize. And the key for us is to make sure that Oklahoma City is a priority on their travel planning. And we are doing that. So the non-controversial cities, and I say non-controversial, that the controversial cities would be of the likes of Vegas, and Hawaii, and Orlando, that look like they're boondoggles. Whereas our smart positioning in Oklahoma City and what we've been able to attract is a very smart decision for people choosing to come and have their meetings and vice versa. So our reputation and image that we are enhancing in our city has definitely translated into the travel industry, and our opportunity is to continually capitalize on it. In terms of hotel construction, it basically has slowed down over the last year with the economy. However, in our local hotel construction situation has basically mirrored that, and since January of 2008, we have added 23 hotel properties, contributing 2,400 hotel rooms. Now, that may not sound like a lot, but you multiply that into total room nights, that is 876,000 additional room nights in Oklahoma City that we are to fill. But the benefit, and that's an 18% increase, you add that, total, total capacity in Oklahoma City, we have 5.9 million room nights to sell. I'll be, I'm thrilled to say, though, at the end of our fiscal year, June 30th, Oklahoma City's rate, was, occupancy rate was up 5%, and we basically had an increase of 158,000 rooms in the first six months of 2009 alone. So Oklahoma City is being seen as a value, and value doesn't mean cheap. Value is a combination of price, quality, and the overall experience that we have. And our hospitality industry is coming along very well in our city, to the point that when people come here, they love it. They enjoy the experience. It's our southern hospitality, goes a long way. In all the conferences that we've hosted, we hear a lot about that. And so we never want to lose sight of who we are as Oklahoma Cityans. But basically, the foresight of what's happened, as you can see in Oklahoma County since 1990, everything has been a major positive increase. And the reason for that is, I'd say, it's the collaboration and the vision of the civic and the public leadership of the city. We determine the infrastructure, the venues, things that we need to do to be able to attract and make this a very viable industry for the city. And it's contributing a lot from the economic impact. In terms of how we are faring, you see those are Oklahoma County numbers, but according to the statistics, 90% of those numbers are contributed only in Oklahoma City itself. But basically, what that means, the bottom line, the impact of travel, for every Oklahoma City resident, they are benefit, benefiting $279 in tax revenues, just based off of convention and visitors industry. So it is a viable industry. I'm going to turn it over to Mike Carrier, the president of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, for the remainder of the comments.
Thank you, Rhonda. I also want to commend our commission, 17 volunteers that contribute a tremendous amount of time to this industry and to what we do. And also thank our staff. They're the folks that really produce the results that we're going to talk about for just a couple of minutes here today. Wrong button. Jane, can you, there you go. There we are. This past year, we have had a very good year. We were able to put out 33 formal bids. We brought in 34 individuals who came in for actual site visits or groups that were here to plan future conventions. We booked over 200 future conventions, sports activities, and other events that accounted for some 191,000 future room nights. That doesn't count our horse shows or our tourism industry, and we'll talk about those in just a minute. But that 191,000 is a 69% increase from just five years ago. So indeed, Oklahoma City continues to be not only a viable, but a growing base for conventions, meetings, and other activities. You're going to have to drive this thing, okay? You drive it. All right, you can drive it. I had a wreck last Thursday night, and everybody knows I don't know how to drive. What you see here are the logos of four different groups that have met here. This is representative of the kinds of meetings that we have. And I think two things that are very important from this list. Number one, Redman Triathlon and the Central State Shrine Association. The people that participate in those types of activities, we don't know what they do outside of be runners or support the shrine with all of their activities. Very often, however, these are civic, political, and corporate leaders from other communities that are here visiting, sometimes for the first time, and looking at Oklahoma City in a different light. Many of these folks represent economic development opportunities that may, in fact, bring us future development on the economic development side in terms of new companies, new manufacturers, new headquarters, any number of different things. As importantly to that, though, is what these folks represent in terms of our image. We recently hosted the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Great program. We had a tremendous event. And part of the upshot of that is that we have now been asked, the mayor received a call from the National League of Cities, asking us if we would consider putting in a proposal to host a future National League of Cities meeting. It came from their executive director, being here at U.S. Conference of Mayors and seeing what Oklahoma City can do. We're very pleased to say that we are working with them to look at their future opportunities, and that we'll be, we'll be putting in a request, or submitting a request to them to be able to host National League of Cities at a future date, as soon as we finish all of the due diligence that is required from that. Tourism or leisure travel is a very important aspect of what we do. There are a lot of folks that travel through this city, as Rhonda said, and our job is to try to get them to stop, spend a night, spend two or three nights, come back often. We tell people all the time, our job is to, we don't want them to move here. We want them to spend all their money, go home, and then come back. That, you know, that's economic development, just a little bit different way. We want them to keep bringing new money. Well, this year, our motor coach industry came back and came back pretty strong. 666 group tours that came here, organized groups of people, an 80% increase in what we had seen just a few years ago. Over 28,000 passengers on those tours. Many of those folks will come back again and again on their own from what they see here. We have recently opened a visitor's center at the Cox Center. We're seeing tremendous return on that, as we see more people having access to literature, information about what there is to see and do in Oklahoma City while they're here on a seven-day-a-week basis. They are able to get to our literature anytime that the Cox Center is open. And so whether we have our personnel there or not, they still have access to that information. We think that's a very valuable service and appreciate your support of that. In terms of our marketing department, the third leg of what we do, these are the folks that spend a lot of time telling people about why it's a great idea to come to Oklahoma City. This past year, for example, we had over $940,000 in non-paid publicity. What that means is those articles that show up in the New York Times, or in Southern Living, or other publications, that have a dollar value that we can measure, that's free. And when I was in Louisiana, they called it lanyard, a little something extra. We had 17 travel writers that were here this year. You know, our internet visits 1,300,000. Five years ago, our internet activity was 365,000 visits over the course of a year. We're almost a million more visits today than what we saw then. Our advertising inquiries, inquiry, queries are up. One of the things we have done is to use the catchphrase of Oklahoma City, cool and warm. A cool place to visit with a lot of neat things going on here, but a warm, friendly reception when you get here and a place you want to come back to. We've used the duality of Oklahoma City with our ads, heart and soul, leaps and bounds, loud and proud. We've got other ads that are things like in and out, rock and roll, rock and roll. We used Wayne and the Flaming Lips with California roll. So, you know, we've found innovative ways to do that. We've carried over our collateral material to everything that we do, our visitor's guide, our mapping guide, our internet site, all using that duality theme. One of the other important things that our marketing folks do, and I talked about it briefly a minute ago, is we host travel writers who come in and say really great things about Oklahoma City. They don't have to say those things. It's what they experience while they're here. You're going to see this over the next three or four slides, but one of the interesting things and one of the neat things, I think, about this is what's happened over the last four years in terms of changing the image of Oklahoma City. And it's not just the CBB, it's not just any one entity, it's the community aspect of what has happened. It's things you all have done here from the horseshoe. It's things city staff has been involved in. It's things that economic development with the chamber has been involved in. It's things that the bureau has worked together on that have really helped to put out the image of Oklahoma City that we all want people to see and that we all appreciate on a day-to-day basis. I say this because, three years ago, we went to a show called the Travel Media Showcase. That's where we get a chance to meet travel writers. And the way that works is when it first is announced, the travel writers get an opportunity to say, okay, what cities would we like to sit down and talk with while they're there about coming to see their city? We had 30 possible appointments. And after the travel writers get to pick the cities they want to see, then the cities get to say, here's who we'd like to talk to. When we were allowed to go in and say, we'd like to talk to these people, nobody, not a single travel writer, in 2007 at Travel Media Showcase had asked to talk to us. Now, we filled 25 of those slots. And as a result of that, we've been getting a lot of the comments that you see on the screen and other things you hear. In three weeks, we will go to the 2010 Travel Media Showcase. When we opened up the window to select our appointments, out of the 30 appointments, 20 had already been taken by travel journalists wanting to talk to us. Tremendous turnaround that we're seeing. That meeting's going to be held in Irvine, California, the end of September, and I'm going to fly out there just for their closing banquet. And I'm not doing that for my health, or because I want to take a quick trip to California. We are the finalist city for the 2010, or 2011 Travel Media Showcase. So we have a very good opportunity that we may well see about 125 travel journalists in here for a week next September, who will be seeing a lot of different cities, but they'll be hosted by Oklahoma City and have the opportunity to see all the things that we have here that are going on, and it will pay great dividends for us. We just got word this morning, one of those travel journalists that we see from time to time came in, and I want to be sure I get this right, Travel Leisure, Travel and Leisure Magazine, an online story that just got posted, America's Coolest River Walks, and this is their September edition. Bricktown Riverwalk is one of the 10 coolest river walks in the entire United States. And that came from one of the journalists that we were able to bring in. That's the kind of thing that we are able to do, day in and day out, to make sure that people understand what's going on in Oklahoma City. This past weekend, we hosted the U.S. Canoe and Kayaks National Championships. Their board of directors, many of whom were here for the very first time, were absolutely blown away by Oklahoma City, what we have done and what we are doing. And I can tell you that the response we have gotten from them is typical of what we get from sports groups, convention groups, all these folks that come through here. We would have never believed it unless we saw it. We'll be back, and we'll be back often. We appreciate the ongoing support that you folks give us. We appreciate the support of city staff. I've worked in a number of cities, and I can tell you that they are a tremendous group of people to work with and to have the opportunity to do things in conjunction with and for. So we appreciate you all. We appreciate the partners we have here in the industry. It's going to be another good year. Our industry is coming back strong, and we think that Oklahoma City is well positioned to be a leader in that. As Rhonda said, you have our full written report. We'll be happy to answer any questions you might have from that. But thank you again for all that you do for our industry and for us. We look forward to continuing to work with you.
All right. Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Rhonda, thanks very much. Any comments or questions for either of them? All right. Appreciate it. Any other comments or questions or considerations on the consent docket?
Just a question, a request on AM, Mayor.
AM?
Yes.
All right.
It's the rider statues down at the river. Jim, it's probably been a year since we've, councils had an update, and that's not for now, but an update on our sculpture plans. Could we just, in a couple of weeks, what we've completed and then the schedule, best that you can, schedule for the remaining ones?
We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I just mention AU? This is, sounds like Rotary Day on the horseshoe, but I did want to mention that item AU is a resolution accepting the donation of a large replica of the Guardian statue, which is located, of course, on top of our Capitol. is located, of course, on top of our Capitol. And this is the centennial year, 100th anniversary of the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City, and they graciously donated a, I think it's seven-foot-tall Guardian statue that will be located in the median between the Skirvin Hotel and the Chase Tower as their gift to the city.
Wonderful. How tall will it be?
I think it's seven feet.
Cool. Okay, great.
Your Honor, I've got a couple of minor questions.
Okay.
On J., Point 1 and Point 2. This is a routine item we get all the time, accepting dedications in a plant. And this one has a comment in there that raised my curiosity. A subdivision bond was not required? And I'm working in my ward with an area where we had a bonding issue, and I was curious as to what the criteria was for when we require a bond and when we don't require a subdivision bond to guarantee the completion of the facilities that developers required.
Excuse me. The issue there is that they put the improvements in before they asked for the inspection, so there was no surety put up front. If they would have submitted a subdivision bond, then they could have started selling lots and building the houses. But in that case, they did the improvements out of their own pocket, basically, instead of borrowing the money.
Well, bond's not required if the improvements are in place before they sell any lots.
That's correct.
That's correct. That makes sense. Thank you. And I have a question on item K, Your Honor, as well. It's a request for proposals for a professional consultant with energy conservation code experience to develop and pair implementation of an Oklahoma City Energy Conservation Code. And as I read this, it seemed like we were going to put additional restrictions or requirements on commercial and residential buildings to be energy efficient. And as we ask this consultant to pursue this project, I wonder if we could include the request or requirement that any suggestion he raises has a cost-benefit calculation associated with it?
We'd be happy to do that.
So we don't ask people to spend money where there's not an adequate return or a benefit associated with it?
We'd be happy to do that, Mayor.
And I'm sorry, I did have just one other quick finish. Dennis, this is probably to you. This is item Z, and it was an amendment to the Contract for Engineering Services on the Brock Creek Drainage Improvements Sanitary Sewer. Is that a result of the June 14th rains and flooding, or is this a earlier project?
No, this is a project that was planned a long time before that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will this help in that area?
Yes, it will.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? Any other comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. On to the concurrence docket. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on anything listed under the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item 8, these are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 1. It's an ABC issue at 8139 Northwest 10th Street. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. Has anybody signed up to speak on this? Do we have anybody in the audience against this item? This is a ABC for, it actually expired. It was a club that was there before. The gentleman's renewing it, going to make it an actual restaurant, needs an ABC back on it again. So if there's no protesters, I move the item.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Looks like we're ready to vote on item 8A1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 7. The address is 3700 Southeastern Avenue. It's currently R1, single-family residential. It would become an I-2, moderate industrial district. Skip?
Yes, I haven't received any opposition to this. I spoke with the representative, and I have no problems with it, and ask that we move forward with it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8A2. Any other comments or questions? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Good bet. Thanks. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 1. The address is 6446 North Panile. It's been R4 general residential district, and it would become a simplified plan unit development district. And Larry, we have one person who has signed up to speak. Okay?
Me?
Larry.
I'm sorry. It is Ward 3. It's item 3, but it's Ward 1. I misread it.
Larry can handle it if he wants to.
No, it sounds like this one's all yours. Let's let whoever signed up speak.
All right. Janet Tanner?
Can I just give these to you?
Sure. Janet, why don't you pull that mic up? You already were into it. Would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Janet Tanner. I live at 6447 North Panile Avenue, 73132. I am a homeowner, and I am speaking today for my fellow homeowners on Panile and College Streets. They have, we would also like to mention the renters. They've endured and have experienced some of this traffic abuse just like us. We are a two-street neighborhood with access to the Pavilion and Athletic Club. We are seeking a little justice and literally to save our neighborhood's life. We have no resources or access to big corporation lawyers. We are alone, but united as a neighborhood, presenting our causes to you, our city council. Unfortunately lately, I've been having a lot of senior moments, so I'm going to read my speech so I don't forget it, okay? We endured the nearly two years of renovation by Isabella. With no complaints from us, the property does look better. Approximately five months ago, more or less, Isabella started serving breakfast to their extended guests. After a period of time, Isabella started serving supper to their extended guests. Then Isabella started serving beer. Then Isabella started serving wine. And now they want an alcohol license to serve to their extended guests. These are some warning signs for our neighborhood. Extended guests are not apartment dwellers. They are transits, here for an allotted time for their training, and then they are gone. The new extended guests come. Isabella is a 30-minute drive for these guests to get to their training destinations. So Isabella finds new ways, like alcohol, to entice them to stay there. They add more incentive to attract them to stay there. Their extended guests do not care or know that Isabella is zoned R4 general residential district. They do not know how much they disrupt our streets, our lives, or our neighborhood with their cars and pickup trucks. They see themselves as one person, but when you combine them all together, it really has an impact on our little neighborhood. These people want to get the best bang for their buck, so they come and they go. They receive their full per diem receipt to give to their employers, and they are happy. Our volunteer car counter at the Pavilion estimates approximately 100 extended guests for the Breakfast and Supper Club. This is only for extended guests and their guests. No apartment dwellers are invited. Isabella makes a profit, and we get the traffic abuse from it. This big business apartment complex is no different than any other big business. They want to make a profit. That is their goal. There is no respect for homeowners or property. Subject property has a lot of schemes for profit, and they manage to give the word "complimentary" a whole new meaning. We used to ask ourselves, why Isabella didn't put their Pavilion that services all their needs and their fenced-and-gate property where they're sculpted 45 acres of land? Are there two lakes when they spent their $16 million to renovate? Now, the answer is very clear to us. They would rather subject our two-street neighborhood with a traffic nightmare before they would risk losing any profit for their real apartment dwellers. No one would rent an apartment 300 feet or more with all these traffic conditions our neighborhood faces each day. These are some warning signs from us, for us. On June 24, 2010, I asked about the 300-feet law. I was sorely dismissed with laughter from the planning and zoning and told that this did not apply to us. Thanks to someone who is observant of this law, we're getting a third hearing, or maybe it had to go before the city council. We don't know. We're just grateful to get another hearing. All of our traffic problems are solely due to the commercial and retail enterprises. That's with, that's which are? The combination of the public athletic club and a commercial restaurant open to extended guests. Our nightmare of traffic in our streets resembles a freeway, a speedway, our imminent interstate with 18- and 16-wheeler trucks, all coming and going to the Pavilion and to the Athletic Club. All this traffic has been forced on us by Isabella's greed. It has been detrimental to our property. It has caused an adverse and a negative impact on our properties in our area. And now they want to rezone. They want Spud 565 passed so they can add alcohol to our already big existing traffic problems, but also for extended guests and their guests. But even more than that, it means more profit. Spud 565 will give them more power to force their will on us. Janice Powers, Ward 2 on Planning and Zoning, called this permit request, this alcoholic beverage consumption restaurant with alcoholic overlay, as loosey-goosey. The guidelines for this rezoning are not that structured. There will be no one to enforce the rules. There would be no one in charge except Isabella, expected to do the right thing and abide by what little guidelines there are. Please do not pass this Spud 565 with a promise of obeying any rules from Isabella. We do not trust Isabella with our neighborhood's future or at the present time. They could remove all that concrete from their tennis court, build up that ground, put an addition onto that Pavilion, and have the biggest and best bar money could buy, and a hired bartender that knows how to mix all kinds of liquor to serve to their extended guests. And then they get into their cars and pickup trucks and drive on our streets of Panile and College. Who's going to stop them? If you do pass this rezoning, we will still have our traffic problems. If you do not pass it, we will still have traffic problems. But, well, I got that backwards. But anyway, but now we'll also have an alcohol problem mixed with our traffic problem. When Isabella asked for this rezoning, we all agreed that we have had enough abuse from Isabella, and we would fight this rezoning till the death of it. We do not want our children or elderly at risk.
Janet, how much more do you have? I just want to make sure we're not getting into something that we just don't have time for. Oh, my goodness. Can you see, it's kind of similar. I can get your point. You guys are upset, and there's a bunch of you.
Okay, well, do you just want me to tell you what we want?
Okay. If that'll put it into this, that's what we want.
We do not want to live 100 feet, 200 feet, or 300 feet from the Pavilion under all these traffic conditions and with the prospect of an alcohol license to mix with the traffic. We have decided unanimously, the only solution to solve our traffic problems and to save our little neighborhood from this absolute monarchy are, and we respectfully ask of you, our city council, do not pass this Spud 565 to revoke the restaurant permit, to revoke the open-to-the-public athletic club for a membership price, to revoke the beer and wine license. We never want this to happen in our neighborhood again. We are grateful to you, city council, and we thank you for your time.
Janet, thanks for coming down. Was there protest at the planning stage?
Yes, there was.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think the protest is what caused some of the amendments that have been made.
I see.
Probably, that you've got over here on the time.
There was likely some negotiation at the planning process in response to the neighbors' concerns?
Yeah. I've got a couple of questions. How, Bob, are they serving, how are they serving beer and wine currently without an ABC?
I'm Melissa Wheeler, the General Manager of Esola Bella. What we're doing right now is we do offer free 3.2 beer on Friday afternoons from 4:00 to 6:00, and Saturday afternoons from 4:00 to 6:00. That's the only, any alcoholic beverage service that we have. We do breakfast service to our extended stay guests, which is approximately 259 homes. That service, since we began the renovation in 2007, we've always had the same number of homes there. We haven't added or deleted. The Pavilion was at one point used as the property club room, the property offices, the leasing office even. In an effort to remove a lot of the traffic from Panile and College, we are actually moving all operations to a 63rd Street location, which means that no one will be checking in, checking out, moving in, moving out, looking at apartments or anything from that Panile location. The only thing that will happen out of there is breakfast service, dinner service, and alcohol service, which will be only during dinner hours. Dinner is from 4:30 PM until 7:30 PM. We are not doing any off-site solicitation. There will absolutely be no advertisements for our "you all come" invitation to the facility. It is strictly for the 259 extended stay guests. One thing I would like to comment on, though, is I really don't feel that we have been a hindrance to the community. She may mention Ms. Tanner's debt of the $60 million renovation. In the end, when it's all said and done, it's closer to 30. All the property values in that area have increased over the three years we've been there, anywhere from $7,000 to $10,000 a year. Our property taxes alone at Esola Bella frankly doubled. We're paying right now $8,000 a month to the city for our room and tourism taxes. I see that to double because we will be selling alcohol beverages, alcoholic beverages as well, so I see that doubling. And everything is not centered, I think the, there's a misconception that it's all centered around just FAA. We do have a large FAA population coming in from out of town, but that is actually less than 50% of our extended stay guests. We have a lot of government employees, I mean federal government, FEMA. We actually housed over 100 disaster recovery people after the June 14th flood and the May tornadoes and hailstorms. We had insurance adjusters, FEMA representatives, a lot of different construction people there as well. So we serve a large demographic of people, some of which are Oklahomans that are coming for a week's vacation. So it's not just one entity we're looking at here. What we really tried to do when we started Esola Bella was listen to what our guests and residents want, and we've been successful in that, in actually giving them what they were looking for. It isn't all about per diem. It's about what they're looking for and what they want in a facility, and this is just one more step towards that.
Okay. It looks like you've made a number of concessions in these amendments. Were these to address concerns of the neighbors?
That is exactly correct because of the traffic issue, which we have alleviated all employee parking on Panile at this point. All of our employees have to walk from another location. I kept hearing the word unanimous in Ms. Tanner's statement. Just so you guys know, there are 30 single-family homes on College. There are 30 duplexes on Panile, which are actually 60 doors. That's a total of 90 doors of families living there. I personally went to every single door, and by no means is there, is it unanimous. In fact, from what I saw in the protest letters, I think there were 17 that showed up in this packet. I will bluntly tell you, in the planning commission stage, there were 47 signatures. Between myself going door-to-door and explaining to them what we were really doing and actually inviting them to our facility to take a look, we successfully were able to bring 30 of these people these people over to our side and actually understand what we're trying to do. We made it an invitation to all the homeowners in the area to come look at us and see what we're actually doing there.
Sounds like a good idea. Sam, and then Larry.
Did you say the hours for serving alcohol would be restricted, 4:30 to 7:30?
Absolutely correct.
And for residents only?
For guests only, that is right. There's absolutely no outside advertising will happen. No one can come in off the street and buy any alcoholic beverages. It is not set up that way. No one can come in off the street and buy a dinner. It is strictly for the guests and residents that are there.
And did the residents understand that?
The residents of?
College and Penile?
I think so, because I actually submitted a letter.
Bringing all these additional, you know, to bring all these additional guests and additional people in a kind of public?
And I think they understand that, because as part of my going door-to-door, I actually gave letters explaining, outlining this, and it was also made abundantly clear in the planning commission stage, which Ms. Tanner was also part of that as well. In fact, at our second planning commission meeting, when it went up for vote, there were actually no protesters at all. So I don't know what's changed between then and now.
So you'll have that signed in some way, residents only?
Absolutely. And we have, well, I mean, we've got a person at the counter, for lack of a better word, a concierge, maître d-type person, and a courtesy patrol person that will actually be checking to make sure that you actually live there. We have cards issued, so.
Larry?
Point of information, if you could help me. The health clubs was mentioned. That's not part of this building right here, is it?
It absolutely isn't. The fitness center, which is 30,000 square feet, was also, was part of the original construction of this facility in 1972. In looking through the county assessor's office, appears that most all the homes on College and Penile were built around that same timeframe. The city at that point in 1972 thought the infrastructure existed for 90 residents plus 800 apartment residents to be able to live and use the facilities that are already there. The fitness center is a standalone building. It is maybe at best an eighth of a mile from the pavilion. It is on Penile, but it is a standalone building and houses weight equipment, a regulation-sized basketball court, indoor pool, tennis court, et cetera.
Do you get to the fitness club off of 63rd, off of this loop?
You can get to the fitness center from Penile or by walking through the property. There's bridges across the lakes, and there's walkways, and it does have gated access. Since the majority of these 259 people are coming from out of town, or at least in the 40% to 50% of the FAA, they don't bring vehicles with them at all. They're not, so they take a shuttle back and forth to the academy. They literally have no vehicle switch to drive over to the pavilion. They walk over every single morning for breakfast and every single evening for dinner service.
If that's the case, where we were shown some pictures where not only is the parking lot full, but the streets are lined with cars, where are they coming from?
That was for an event that was in conjunction with the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce. We do events, sometimes as many as two or three a month. In the month of August alone, we are partners with the Big Brothers Big Sisters Foundation. On August 8, we had approximately 90 participants, including some of the Oklahoma City Thunder team, that is a partner in the Big Brothers Big Sisters as well, for a back-to-school event for them. Last Thursday, I think it was the 26th, there was an Alliance of Emerging Professionals event. The streets are posted with two-hour maximum parking. We also parked about 20 to 25 vehicles on 63rd Street in front of our leasing office and shuttled them over using our Aso La Bella cars or golf carts. Another, approximately one-third of those vehicles, were parked inside the gated area on another fenced area and shuttled over as well. Serving or not serving alcohol will not change those events. We are very active in the CDB, the Chamber of Commerce, and Big Brothers Big Sisters, as in many other organizations. We'll still continue to do that with or without the alcohol. We do mandate that they follow the rules on the two-hour parking, though, on the street, if they're street-side.
Well, if I read the amendments that you've agreed to, if you did an event like that, you couldn't serve alcohol.
Absolutely correct. That is absolutely right.
Bob, I got a couple of questions for you. Let me back up. If this was a vacant piece of land zoned R4, and somebody wanted to put a small extended stay hotel with 250 rooms and have a restaurant and a bar, could they do it on R4?
No, they couldn't.
Okay. If we approve this and they get their ABC, future owners, are they, do they have to abide by the amendments in this SPUD under the ABC?
Yes, this is the zoning of the property, so they would be subject to these conditions.
So if it changed hands, the ABC would go with it, but they'd still have to abide by the SPUD?
That's correct.
And any amendments in the SPUD?
Just to, as well, maybe settle your mind on that as well, the owner of this facility is, this is a long-term hold. It is by no means something that he purchased and is wanting to flip in two or three years. His grandchildren will still be managing this property. So, and all of us that work with the community, or work with the property, rather, are ingrained in the community. We employ as many as 100 people at any given time, between onsite employees and general contractors and their employees. We're all ingrained in the community. We've seen this community go from a very deferred maintenance property with maybe 30% occupancy to an actual viable part of the community, in which that, as it stands right now, is at 100% occupancy, which I think is another issue with the traffic, in that the current homeowners have experience with it when it was 30%. So they had 100 people living there.
Okay. Back up to my question on the R4 zoning. How is it, then, if they couldn't build a new one and get it under R4, how can they operate what they're doing now under R4?
The apartments are there in R4, and our zoning ordinance doesn't set a minimum rental time. So you can rent an apartment, a building built as an apartment, you can rent it for a day, or a week, or a month. And so what they're doing here is still considered apartments. If you do an extended stay, build it from the ground, you have to be zoned at least C3 in the commercial district, because it's a commercial use. So this is one of those uses that it was built as an apartment, the majority of the facility is an apartment. I think there's 800 total units, and so we have to consider it zoning-wise, it's still an apartment complex.
Do they not require a permit to run this restaurant and propose a bar? And if so, how do they do that under an R4 zoning?
It would be considered accessory to the apartment complex, and so we would be able to approve that without a commercial zoning. It's an accessory use to the apartment.
And have we done that?
As far as I know, they're permitted for the restaurant. I haven't called up and checked that, but I assume that they are.
On one of the amendments, you talked about your service would be 4:30 to 7:30. I see it listed here as 4:09.
The pavilion itself is open until 9:00 PM. Dinner service stops at 7:30 PM.
This says mixed beverage service would be limited Monday through Friday, 4:09, and Sunday, 4:06. I mean, Saturday, 4:06. No service on Sunday?
No service on Sunday, and there's no dinner service on Saturday. We had agreed with the planning commission that we would only sell alcoholic beverages during our dinner service, and that currently is 4:30 to 7:30, not until 9:00 PM.
Well, that's not what it says here.
So we need to make that amendment if you choose to approve this.
Could I ask the lady a question, please, the neighborhood? She mentioned, you showed us the pictures of the crowding on the street, the parking on the street, and the parking lot full and all that. She mentioned that that was an event that they held there that doesn't necessarily happen.
Those pictures that I have given you, that's an everyday occurrence. I'm telling you, at 5 o'clock, that place opens every morning. At 5:30, they start serving meals, and they're not over until 9:30 AM. They start at 4:30 in the afternoon, and they are not over until they close that door at 9 o'clock at night. And those pictures of those 18-wheelers and 16-wheeler trucks are bringing in food. Now, we presume somebody's paying for all that food.
Well, they, yes. They're operating a food service for their guests out of that.
That's exactly right. Well, I want to know why they want to have the athletic club open to the public for a membership price. That just adds more traffic. I'm telling you, if you lived on our street, if you lived on College, you wouldn't question this. You have no idea. It is like, it is, they can tell you anything they want you to hear.
Yeah, I think I understand your point, ma'am. Thank you.
One comment, I'm so sorry. One comment about the fitness center is that we have at maximum 10 outside memberships currently. I did not think to bring the roster with me. 50% of those outside memberships are actually from the street college, where some of the women come over to use the pool and take part in the water aerobics class every day. And they're not driving. They're walking over from College.
You have a question?
I have two questions. One is, it seems like the neighborhood's biggest issue is the fact that the parking is affecting the street parking of the neighborhood. Does the facility not have designated parking lot to accommodate all of the residents and your outside guests?
It does. We have more than ample parking inside the fence lines. What happens right now, there's actually 24 parking spaces in front of the subject building. There's another 24 in front of the clubhouse, the fitness center area, rather, I'm sorry. Also, along the street, the city has designated that street parking for two hours. That parking is only for people outside the employee structure, or, so it's for residents, or for guests coming into that pavilion. And right now, I will admit that the pavilion does have people checking in, checking out, sometimes people paying rent. We are moving all of those functions away, as we speak, from the Penile office and locating them on 63rd Street. So all that will happen out of the pavilion will be breakfast service, dinner service, and the alcohol service in the afternoons with dinner service.
My other question is, Bob, on the permit issue that Councilor Morris asked, if this, does this set a precedent that will allow a apartment complex that's presently in existence, and if the apartment complex institutes a policy that, as opposed to a year's lease, that you can have rented an apartment for two weeks to three weeks, and as a result of that, you could basically do the same thing? You could have a restaurant on the grounds of the apartment complex and also sell alcoholic beverages under some permitted use?
Well, they would have to go through this type of rezoning to be able to do that. So, I mean, approving this wouldn't mean you would have to approve it at another location, but restaurants or kitchen facilities are accessory in several schools, churches, those types of places that may not be zoned commercially. So what they're wanting to do here is add the ABC use, and that's why they have to rezone it. They want to serve the mixed beverage. But it's not unusual for a facility like this to have a kitchen.
I understand probably the kitchen. I think the boiling point, it sounds like, is the alcohol, as far as the permitted use. But it just seems like that a facility, and from the pictures, I mean, it looks like a gorgeous facility, and unless my eyes are deceiving me in reference to what I'm looking at, that I just can't imagine a facility with this number of acreage on it, that the parking is so limited for all of the usage.
I don't think that it's limited parking. During an event process, that is why we have a shuttle service, where we allow people to put their cars in another area of the property and are shuttled over by our courtesy patrol. I don't think that the parking scenario has changed. As I said, in 1972, when the property was first built, they planned at that point for 800 homes, and a fitness center, and a clubhouse. Maybe they didn't have the kitchen, but everything else was exactly the same, and it worked for them then. What we find is that, as I said, 259 of these people, for the most part, actually walk. I mean, you're walking across a beautiful bridge with beautiful landscaping, with beautiful lakes. They leave their car parts in front of their room or home and walk across those bridges to the pavilion, where, of course, there's also a pool. So it's not like it's an inconvenience for them to do that, and that's typically what happens. On an event scenario, yes, there are a lot of vehicles there. Those events are usually short-lived, anywhere from two to, at the most, three hours at any one time.
Bob, they can operate the way they're operating right now, which is their food service and their beer and wine. This SPUD is solely there to give them mixed drinks in those times?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Add the ABC, too.
And as with any business, I mean, that is exactly what we are. We're a business, and, you know, we're there as well to make money, too, in addition to providing them with, our guests with another viable commodity there. You know, honestly, the sales tax revenue generated from this will be turned right around and given back to the city. So in addition to paying right now $8,000 a month, as I said, it should increase to the tune of $16,000 to $20,000 a month.
I just have a real concern with this concept of allowing apartments to turn into extended stay hotels in these residential districts, and especially with this one down in where the homes are at like this. I don't want Aso La Bella to think I don't appreciate the improvements you've made to the property. I've toured it. I understand what you've done to that property, and I really appreciate how you're helping that whole Ironwood area, and I don't want you to think I'm not appreciative of that. But I just know that I can get to the mixed drink part right in this R4 and right in the neighborhoods. If the food service is allowed under the way you're doing it now, and if you can still do your beer and wine in these hours, if you want to help your guests out in under the way you're doing it now, to me, I think that's appropriate, or it's at least allowable. I'm going to make a motion to deny the SPUD for the ABC, for the mixed drinks.
Can I say one more thing, please?
You've got your denial. What do you need to say? You haven't got it, I've made the motion to. I'll put it that way.
I want to know, is our neighborhood going to have 30 or 40 cars every morning, Monday through Friday, serving breakfast from 4:30 until 9:30, or 5:30 until 9:30? Is this what we have to look forward to? The people that have retired, and now they're faced with all of this every day?
Well, I understand your concern about it. The parking on the street is going to be a traffic commission issue, and I would encourage the neighborhood to get a petition in front of the traffic commission to either eliminate the on-the-street parking, or make some restriction to one side, or however it is that you can get that through the traffic commission, but that's not necessarily associated with this SPUD that we're voting on today. And again, if there's that much, if it's documented that much, if you'll get a request in front of the traffic commission to study Penile, and we'll see whether there's any restrictions that we can place on Penile or not. Okay? Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? All right. Cast your votes. Everyone voted? All right.
Would you read the, the motion?
The motion?
The motion was to deny the application. To deny?
A, a yes vote denies the application. All right. 5-3. The motion to deny passes. We're on to item 8A4. It's a zoning case in Ward 8. The address is 7601 West Hefner Road. It's currently a pud and it would become a new simplified planning and development. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a, a office complex being proposed in an area that has mixed-use development in it. It's got a school, it's got a post office, senior citizens, senators. It's consistent with the development along Hefner Road. I might ask Councilman Morris for his opinion since it's across the street from his ward if he thinks it's okay. I'm, is there anybody signed up to speak about this, Francis? There were no protests at the planning commission. It was unanimously approved, and I would move for approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 8A4. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
And, Your Honor, the African has asked for the emergency, and I'd like to move the emergency.
Okay. We have a motion on the emergency. How about a second? Cast your votes on the emergency. Passed unanimously. All right. We're on to item 8A5, and we're back in Ward 8. The address is 12351 North May. It's currently R4 general residential and C3 community commercial. It would become a simplified planning and development. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a project that's caused some confusion. Initially, the adjacent property owners were concerned about increasing the density, and essentially, all this does is allows these individual units, allows these units to be sold individually, and this establishes a lot for each of these residents to be on. There's no increase in the density, there's no increase in the number of units. And is anybody signed up on this one, Francis?
Okay. There was some, there was some confusion, as I say, some protests at the planning commission level, but those dealt primarily with the misconception that this might be increasing the density permitted, and so, and I think that's been put to bed. I would move approval, Your Honor.
How about a second on item 8A5? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
And, Your Honor, again, I would ask for the emergency on this one.
Okay.
I move the emergency.
Second. Cast your votes. Passes. You're welcome. Item 8B1 is amendments to our downtown sign ordinance. We've already had presentations on this, and this is taking up item B and C. Any comments or questions at this point, or we have a motion on B and then C?
Move approval, please.
Thank you.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Mayor, this one requests the emergency as well.
Okay. Emergency on item 8B2. Cast your votes. Passed. Pat, you're going to need to vote on the emergency, right? Before you leave? We're not going to have enough?
An emergency's on D and E right now.
Is that right?
Okay. Pat, stay, stay first.
Okay. Emergency requires seven votes, that council. Thank you. All right. And item 8C. Meg, you're making a motion on that one as well.
Yes, I'm making a motion on this one as well.
All right. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously, and you want the emergency?
And this also needs emergency.
All right. Cast your votes on the emergency, and it passes unanimously. All right. Item 8D. It's a final hearing. We've had presentations on this. Everybody ready to go? Okay. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8E. Ordinance to be introduced. And Francis, are you going to help us with this one?
For us.
Okay.
Good morning. This item is actually from the finance department because it deals with administration and the payment of funds. The ordinance currently requires that any petty cash funds that are specifically established above $500 must be contained in the ordinance. We have the city manager's office, the police chief, the city auditor's office, and the municipal councilor's office established in the ordinance, and now we're requesting that the city clerk be added. They have expenses that involve filing fees at the counties, and those are not able to be made with pro-card or any other kind of payment. They require cash for those filing fees and have recently become in excess of $500 so often that it impairs the operation, not being able to process those timely. This is pretty much just housekeeping.
We have a motion in a second. We're voting to accept this as introduced on item 8E. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Item 8F is some alterations to our HP ordinance. We have a presentation from Russell.
Yes, and thank you. Nice to be here again. I will, I'll keep this brief. We are constantly trying to amend the, the historic preservation process so we make it easier, not only on staff, but particularly focused on people who live in the historic preservation neighborhoods, and this is a, another effort on the part of staff to, to try and improve the efficiency of the process and just make it easier when they go through it. We are making amendments to Chapter 59 of the zoning code, and that will permit us to do more administrative approvals. We have been dealing with doors and entries and roofs for a long period of time. Most of the issues with these particular items for review are very, very similar, and we have been meeting, staff has been meeting with the historic preservation commission and historic preservation neighborhood representatives to work out how, what items we may be able to bring forward for administrative approval. That accelerates the process. Rather than going to the HP commission and the cost associated with that, we can now review this by staff. So, the intent is to add these to the zoning code for administrative approval. In accompanying that, we're also amending the guidelines, and this will address changes regarding fences, screen and storm doors, and, and again, with roofs, and this is about aligning these recommendations and requirements with general preservation goals and just making it easier again to be able to address these particular issues, the ones that come up repeatedly, require a lot of time to address on the HP commission, so we're trying to remove some of that burden, allow them to focus on the more substantive issues. Through the review process, as I said, we've been meeting since the beginning of the year on this. Neighborhood committees that were involved in this made a number of recommendations that were incorporated into the changes. Historic Preservation Commission helped draft this, so they were involved all the way along, and we had extra meetings, two extra meetings a month to be able to go through this process. They're recommending approval, and then it went to Planning Commission earlier this month, who are also recommending approval. So, that's it, and I'm happy to answer any questions. It's just relatively minor amendments to be able to facilitate an easier process for everybody concerned.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Russell? All right. Thanks, Russell. How about a motion then on item 8F1?
So moved.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then item 8F2. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously also. All right. Item 8G is moving forward on the planned water rate adjustment.
Mayor, as Marsha comes up, this is a look at our water rates, and it's a water rate adjustment, and we do this about every four or five years. That's kind of the process that actually Mr. White established back in about 1986 feet, when you were, when you were Water Trust Chairman the first time. And anytime we do water rate increases, we're very, very sensitive to, to how that impacts our citizens. We look very carefully at the structure and how, how we compare it with other cities, but then we have to balance that with the long-term needs of, of the utility and making sure that we have resources to provide long-term water supplies, to, to provide the treatment capacity we need so we can have a month of 100-degree temperature and not have water rationing in, in, in our system, that we provide the quality of water that we need to throughout our system, and of course, we're able to provide good sanitary sewer services without sanitary sewer back, backflows and providing, you know, a good treatment system into our receiving streams. So, with that, Marsha, can you, can you go over the, the proposal?
Thank you, City Manager. It's an honor to be with you today, Council. We'll start with, we'll start by, by hitting the highlights. The program's driven by our capital investment needs. The rate plan is focused on capital investment, and we have several needs: adequate pressure and flow, sufficient capacity, sewer backups and overflows, and some strengthening and growth. We, we build the capital program using plans, and we don't look at them, we don't use those plans created by national experts in any blind way. For example, the 2003 Water Master Plan recommends that we expand the Hefner Water Treatment Plant now by 75 million gallons today. We're going to expand it by 25 million gallons today. We believe that that will meet our customers' needs. The water system, the major challenges are water pressure problems, and you see on the map the four areas, north, south, northwest and southwest, where we have those problems. Capital program addresses those projects. Debbie, can we look at, yeah, thank you. We're, we're continuing a water transmission main from the Draper Plant in southeastern Oklahoma City. West, we're coming, the red line you see on your, on your slide comes up past the Will Rogers World Airport, builds a pump station over there and helps solve the pressure problem or make the pressure better in southwest Oklahoma City. More critically, this year, we had a waterline fail that put a lot of people out of water in northwest Oklahoma City. That project is being, a replacement pipeline's being bid right now. It's the first of three projects that will be bid to bring better water pressure into northwest Oklahoma City, that area near the Turnpike and Northwest Highway. Coming to the east to work on our northeast water pressure problem, we're building another pipeline out of the Hefner Plant that will tie the plant into a 36-inch main that runs northwest on western and help improve the general supply into northeastern Oklahoma City. The wastewater program, this map shows you the wastewater system and the drainage basins on which the system is organized. Similarly, we're making improvements throughout the community. The blue dots, or blue squares are neighborhood improvements, making a, constructing a sewer line and plant improvements in the Chisholm Creek Watershed helps to deal with sanitary sewer overflows that recur near this, near the wastewater treatment plant. Building sewer lines in the south part of the city to mitigate existing sewer overflows near the South Canadian Wastewater Treatment Plant and coming into the center city as well to make general repairs and carry more wastewater out of the center-south part of the city. The Aqua Capital Program currently totals about a half a billion dollars, 463 million in the next five years. It's roughly 60% water and 40% sewer. However, in the next five years, we begin to build, actually pay for construction of a second pipeline from Lake Atoka. We expect, we've scheduled to complete that second pipeline from Lake Atoka as the existing pipeline that brings all of our water into the Draper, lake, into Lake Draper when the existing pipeline turns 60. As part of the financial plan that, that we use to, if we could go to the previous slide, I'm so sorry. The capital plan is, as I said, the driving force, what the revenues look like. Key thing here is that we're, we're working hard to maintain pay-as-you-go investments with debt service payments and keeping those as even as possible. This assumes a 1.5% growth rate, which we do continue to see in our system. The program is based on general financial goals, and here's the rate proposal. We're introducing this today, asking you to consider it, consider holding a public hearing on the 14th of September and consider the ordinance proposal for vote on September 28th. The rate proposal adjusts base charges as well as volume charges. Key for customers, 140,000 of our customers use a 5.8-inch water meter, and their bills will go up by a total of $3.54 in base charges. Again, that, that rate concept presented so briefly does meet the financial goals and is consistent with our recent history of rate adjustments. Net total, average water sewer bill, average water and sewer bill in town will go up $4.89 if the program's approved. We always compare ourselves to other communities, peer cities, and cities in the region. Currently, we're the sixth lowest rate charged of 22 peer cities. We're also the 13th lowest-priced water and sewer bill of the 50 largest cities in the United States. If the rate plan's approved, we'll move to the 11th of our peer cities, and if our peer cities approve, the planned rate increases that we see pending for three cities will be the 13th lowest of the 22 cities. So, again, we continue to hold middle ground, not, not the very lowest we would strive for, but in the middle as we have been for several years. Recommendation meets rating agency, needs good financial practices, and prepares, more importantly, solves capital problems while preparing for future capital needs. We're happy to answer any questions you've got today and take questions over the next couple of weeks as we proceed to public hearing. Thank you. Questions?
Questions for Marsha?
Just one, Mayor. The last rate increase was when, Marsha?
Was in October of 2009.
And it was?
5%.
At dollars amount? Dollar amount?
Um, 5% would have been about 10, 12 cents per 1,000 gallons.
But on, on an overall bill?
On an overall bill?
On an overall bill?
About a dollar?
About a dollar. That was October '09.
Yes, and this is being proposed for October of '10.
Okay. Everybody understand what's being presented to us? Okay. Cast your votes. This item is passed and just introduced today. Thank you, Marsha. All right. Item 8H is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8H? All right. How about a motion then? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. We have one person that's signed up to speak. Is there anyone else who is here to speak on any item listed under 8I? Okay. Larry Ewing? We wore Larry out.
Mayor, was this on item N, 2827?
It was. It was. Item N.
We actually spoke with him earlier, but I thought he was going to stay, so I, but I think we did come to him.
Have you worked that out? Okay. This is, actually, it's historic property. It's the old Glenn's Hickory House.
On 10?
And it's on 10th Street. This gentleman has developed a 711 on one corner and a property on the other corner, and he's in the process of building a small strip center. And as I understand it, he's taken a little longer than he needed to, but it's framed in and it's roofed in, but he doesn't have the floor poured yet, and he wanted to wait to put in the windows until the floor was poured, so Charles said he would be willing to work with him.
Right. He, he just needs, I think he's going to put a temporary structure up to block it.
Very good. Thanks for your help.
All right. Thanks, Charles. Well, let's vote then on 8L unsecured structures. We have a motion? Cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. Let's see. That's I. I called it L, I think it's I. Okay. We're on to item 8J. This is a revocable permit to hold the 2010 Oklahoma Ultra Running Championships in Bluff Creek Park in Ward 8. Pat, you okay with this? Are you going to enter?
I will move the item. You will not enter.
You will not enter, but she will make a motion. How about a second?
Second.
Is there anyone here representing this event here today? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8K. We have struck this item because it already failed in the PPA aspect of our program. All right. On to item 8L. Understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Not.
All right. Have a motion? And a second. We're voting on item 8L. Passed unanimously. Item 8M is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8M, claims recommended for denial? All right. Looks like we're ready to go. How about a motion? Cast your votes. Those claims are denied. And then we go on to item 9, which is claims recommended for approval. Anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item 9, claims recommended for approval?
I will move the item.
All right. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. We're on to item 10. This is items from council, and we will start with Councilwoman Salyer.
Already. I think this probably received as many emails yesterday as the Grand Prix did or maybe even exceeded those, and I see... And I see lots of our colleagues here, I assume there are a number of people, Frances, that are here to speak on this. I perhaps might just make some opening remarks, and I think maybe Councilman Ryan would like to say something as well. This is the third time we've heard this, proposed amendment to the ordinance, and I just want to be very, very clear that the issue here and the reason that has come before us is one of safety. I have said this to a number of people in the two years that I have served on the council, and I believe this is the case for all of us. The number of phone calls and complaints and concerns about individuals panhandling in our city medians has become a real problem. And this proposed ordinance amendment is a response to our citizens' concern for safety. And so I guess I'll probably start there. When you look through our ordinance, the changes that we've made have been to include the word median and a very extensive definition of what it means to be in the median as a prohibited location for people to either panhandle or ask for assistance or ask for rides or try to solicit donations. But as we got a little bit further into the discussion of this amendment, our current code allows for certain exceptions to that prohibition. And it is my concern that allowing any exemption is illogical. If we're saying, in effect, that it is too dangerous for citizens to be in the median or be in the street and requires a city ordinance, then I don't think as a city, we can turn around and say, but if you buy a permit from us, you can go in the street and it's, it's safe for you. So that's the issue here. It's a, it's a public safety issue, both for our drivers and our citizens.
And I think, I think there's been a lot of discussion about some collateral issues. Primary driver, order, safety.
We need to, to keep that in mind as we go forward and discuss this and consider it, that we're, we're dealing with two aspects of safety, I think. Safety to individuals who are in the streets, who maybe sometimes they're not the most attractive people in the world, but they are citizens of Oklahoma City, and they're entitled to some protection. And secondly, the drivers who are distracted at, at the times they enter some of the most busiest intersections we have in the city. And so I think it is, it will be a significant effort to improve the safety of all our citizens who travel the streets, who might want to solicit along our streets. And this, this doesn't prohibit anybody from soliciting. They can stand on the, on the sidewalks, on the, off the street, adjacent to the street, and solicit, as long as they don't get in the street or get into medians, they would be able to do exactly what they have been doing in the past. Ron, I think this is an excellent, excellent step.
We have some people that have signed up.
We have some people that have signed up to speak. Any other council, before we bring people up? Richard Denny?
There's going to be other people that speak here this morning on this particular issue. My name is Rick Denny, 2601 Northwest Expressway. I'm legal counsel for MDA on, on this particular matter. I guess I should start by saying that my client is, is very disappointed that the iconic Fill the Boot campaign that is so important to them has somehow made it into the crosshairs of, of this proposed ordinance change to the tune of what could be as much as 75% of their funding on a very important fundraising effort that, that they do yearly. And it's also my understanding that the Office of Municipal Counsel has, has done some legal work and weighed in on the issues on this, as well as the ACLU. What I've read from the ACLU at this point is, is very general, and, and I really don't see much there with regard to what they've stated on the matter. But what I would like to do is, is sort of take you through the MDA's legal analysis of why the current ordinance that you have in place meets the legal scrutiny and also provides the public safety concerns, I think, that you desire in, in this situation. As you probably well know, the ordinance currently in effect generally prohibits solicitations on the roadway, but it makes the once-per-year limited exception to allow the person to purchase a permit, go out in the roadway under certain circumstances, and, and make the solicitations. For many years, the city of Oklahoma City has operated under this ordinance, which has been content neutral. That is, it, it doesn't rely on the motive of the solicitor. It's applicable to everyone. It, it doesn't make any difference in the application process for a permit to actually solicit on the street or on the median portion, whether we consider the original ordinance or, or the previously considered amendment. It's applicable to everyone. And then it's also narrowly tailored to suit the city's interest with regard to the things that you feel is important to your city government, such as safety and the maintenance of traffic flow. And to me, that is the big issue here. You already have an ordinance in place that, as a general rule, keeps people out of the street and on the safety of the sidewalk or the curbside. But you allow, as, as a course each year, for people to apply for a permit, pay a certain fee, prove self-insurance, and then register the places where the solicitations are going to occur, so you can station people at those locations or just possibly have those on record, so you know if, if resources need to be committed there. Also, having this two-tiered structure that you have in place right now, you also leave ample opportunity for alternative channels of communications and free speech. So what I've sort of gone through there are all, all the cornerstone elements of the Constitution that would be required to survive a, a free speech argument. And that's why I believe the ACLU correspondence that's been, at least that I've reviewed so far, doesn't really have much merit. It's just a broad overview of what those elements are, but I don't think it goes so far as to apply them to the current ordinance that is in effect. There are no elements under the current ordinance that would really implement any type of unfettered discretion or unreasonable administration. What you have works so well right now with regard to drawing the lines and the regulation. What I'm not certain about, when I read the, the overview from the municipal counselor that, that is in the, the records, is what has happened with regard to enforcement of what you have. Because what is under consideration today, the effective result of that is to essentially kill or severely damage the Fill the Boot campaign for MDA. Where are we at in regards to enforcing what we have? What can we do? Can more be done in, on this issue to maybe come up with a solution that is not so harsh on a longstanding, well-known fundraising campaign that is considered by many to be part of the fabric of the United States and even Oklahoma City? I can't tell you how many memories I have, be it as a child or, or with my own children, with filling the boot at the intersection. It's just, it's, it's part of who we are, and it's really unfortunate that at this time of year, this is really what we're talking about as, as some type of collateral damage of, of an unintended consequence of an ordinance change. I don't know if you get anywhere else with your ordinance change that you have proposed than where you are right now. You're, you're still going, going to have to enforce what's being proposed. And if we don't have a history of what's on the books right now and the enforcement and, and how that's being controlled, I don't see why the Fill the Boot campaign should have to suffer because of that. It's, it's going to come down to a matter of enforcement. And, and I think what we're losing here is far more important than, than possibly some of the issues we're, we're talking about. At least with MDA and Fill the Boot, we're talking about firefighters, the ambassadors of public safety of the city of Oklahoma City that are involved in the collection effort. With the permit process, they not only register where they're going to be, but they pay a permit fee, and there's also self-insurances provided on that. Those are some of the things that the city is entitled to do in, in the constitutional process, to allow them to draw lines and ensure that matters of public safety and the traffic flow and financial accountability are provided for. And with that, I would just strongly urge you to take more time on this, possibly set this aside and, and study it some more, but don't let the Fill the Boot campaign be the result of, of an intention to do something that, that I, I don't think that, that is being fully considered there. Deletion of the current exemption, you're going to lose the permit fees, you're going to lose the, the locations of, of where the collectors and solicitors are, and you're also going to lose the, possibly the insurance requirement, since you're deleting that in the amendment as well. And at this time, I guess I would yield, I know we have some other speakers on this, I know the legal portion is very boring, but certainly offer my assistance if, if we can agree to, to set this aside and maybe do some future work on that, I would, I would like to offer my assistance on that. But the people you hear from after me are certainly going to add to the, the real-life value of, of what's at stake here. Thank you.
Bart Connor?
Council members, how are you? Thank you for this rather exciting, entertaining, enduring day, but it's a great pleasure to be here on behalf of Muscular Dystrophy Association. Some of you know, of course, I live down in Norman. I represent MDA, of course, as a volunteer who's based here in Oklahoma City at 5601 Northwest 72nd Street. I appreciate hearing the counselor's perspective on this. I am among the many cheerleaders who are here to support the Muscular Dystrophy Association and the good work that they do. Some of you may not know this, for nearly 30 years, I've been a volunteer, and we're just five days away from the upcoming Labor Day telethon, where we'll continue to raise awareness about families who are struggling with neuromuscular diseases throughout the United States. But as the counselor mentioned, one of our most important grassroots levels of fundraising in the United States is the Fill the Boot campaign. And we've been grateful that it's been enormously successful here in Oklahoma City for many years. In fact, going back to 1954, the firefighters have successfully, professionally, and safely participated in MDA's Fill the Boot campaign for more than 50 years. Now, as a member of MDA's National Board of Directors and a proud Oklahoman, any decision that would diminish the success of the Oklahoma City Firefighters Fill the Boot campaign could be devastating blow to MDA's mission to fund research, to provide meaningful day-to-day care, and other services, including MDA's annual summer camp program for children. Now, cities large and small around the United States run these programs. They allow their firefighters to collect in the streets. I have a very extensive list here that includes cities like Dallas and Houston and Denver and Los Angeles, Miami, Orlando, Atlanta, Chicago, and of course, thousands of cities around the United States and many here in Oklahoma who allow for this program to go on. And in fact, in 2009, this nationwide campaign raised $27 million for families suffering from neuromuscular disease. So it's an enormously successful grassroots campaign. Now, as you all know, the citizens of Oklahoma City are some of the most caring and generous people in the United States, perhaps the world. Last year, they donated more than $240,000. Excuse me. This year in May 2010, $240,000 was raised through this firefighters' Fill the Boot campaign. Now, this represents nearly a 50-cent contribution per man, woman, and child here in Oklahoma City this past May. So I'm joining here as a cheerleader and a supporter of muscular dystrophy and the good people that MDA serves, only to help further discussion, as we would like to be a part of the solution, if we can find a perfect solution for the city of Oklahoma City, of course, for muscular dystrophy, and for the firefighters' Fill the Boot campaign. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Bart. Andrea Pope?
Our address is 5601 Northwest 72nd Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Before I speak, I'd like to introduce you to a couple of families that MDA serves that I'm sure you'll be really interested to hear what they have to say. Deborah Lusk, if you can come up and say a few words.
Okay.
I think it's still morning, but good morning, Mayor and council people. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm sure you all have imagined your future, the future of your children, and the future of your grandchildren. And I am reasonably sure that those thoughts were full of great expectations, high hopes and desires to not only see, but to fully participate in that future. I too share those hopes, dreams, and expectations for my children and my grandchildren. I am even bold enough to hope that I will share in that future with them. My belief, you see, is based first on my faith in God and His power to do all things, and secondly, on His ability to use us, all of us, to share in the betterment of the life of those people that we encounter. On July 16th, 2008, I received a devastating diagnosis of amyotropic lateral sclerosis, ALS, or better known as Lou Gehrig's disease. As I'm sure you are aware, the prognosis for this disease is not very bright. With that diagnosis came a future I never imagined. But with a faithful heart, supportive family, and help from MDA, I am now able to look forward to the best possible future that modern science and the support of others, particularly MDA, can provide. It is the Fill the Boot campaign which provides a major portion of funds which finance many of the services provided by the MDA. These are services which for many are the difference between living independently or possibly living fully dependent on others and the state's social services system. I never knew years ago, when I would drop my money in those boots, that today I would be a beneficiary of those donations, or standing here today as a proud spokesperson for those with one of the 40 muscular dystrophies. My heart is filled with hope each year when I see our Oklahoma City firefighters proudly collecting on behalf of MDA. Please don't diminish that hope. Hope that one day that God is going to touch the minds of a brilliant scientist, and he or she will have that aha moment, that oh yeah, I found the treatment or the cure for these devastating diseases. Hope, hope moves me to stand here before you today, as citizen of this great state of Oklahoma and the city of Oklahoma City, to voice my opposition to the proposed amendment to the current city's solicitation ordinance. I have great regard for the work that you do and the many decisions that you must make. But as a person who is affected by what to what to some may appear to be a hopeless situation, I truly have hope. Hope for the future of my children and their children, your children and their children, and hope that you will do the thing today and not amend this ordinance. That you will do- That you will do the right thing and turn down such a harsh amendment to our city ordinance, which will cause many to lose any hope that they are holding on to, and in a more tangible way, lose the many valuable services and support that provides light in a very dark world. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Dennis, going to come up next?
Hello. My name is Dennis Seville. I live at 7813 Northwest 116. And it's very, it's very humbling to be before you all. This is my first experience here, and it's wonderful. I've enjoyed the morning. And, you know, I've, I'm very proud to be here speaking for MDA. The Fill the Boot campaign, to tell you the truth, you know, my daughter has Charcot-Marie Tooth, which makes her muscles not as strong as others, so she can't run. She's normal in every way, but she just can't run like everyone else does. And so we've been watching the telethon for about the last three years, and the firefighters always give the most money. They always do. And so it's always exciting, they're always brought out at the last, you know, last hour of the day, and I'm always kind of, well, how much money did the firefighters raise? And so the Fill the Boot campaign is important for that. And I wanted to list out just very real, here are the monetary benefits that MDA locally has given my family that Fill the Boot campaign provides most of that money. And I'll go through the list really quickly. One is we get free clinic visits with Dr. Jennifer Norman down in Southwest Medical, which she monitors our, my daughter's progress in terms of her, the advancement of her disease. We get, we get a free $2,000 wheelchair, and this wheelchair has lights on it, on the wheels. Well, those wheelchair, that wheelchair, when we brought it to my daughter's school for a field trip, I was afraid people were going to look at her and stare, but the wheelchair with the lighted-up wheels were exciting to all of her classmates. She's eight years old. And so that wheelchair is provided by MDA. She has free admission to MBA camp, which is $800 per person. My family doesn't have to pay for that. Other families here locally don't have to pay for that because of the money that Fill the Boot raises. And there's also knowledge that people behind me, Karen and others, are working on behalf of my family to find a cure and to help others, and that is funded by this Fill the Boot campaign. So I've heard a lot today about risk and whether or not we can afford risk, the Grand Prix, those types of things, and I've heard your concern, Councilwoman Sawyer, about, you know, public safety, and you're right, I agree, it would be safer for the firefighters not to be in the median. But as you all know better than anyone, there's, you have to weigh the risk with reward on any proposal. The reward of being able to raise $245,000 from Fill the Boot campaign seems to outweigh the minimal risk that trained firefighters who understand the dangers of roadway, the risks that they would have in being struck by a car or that type of thing. So to me, the clear choice would be to allow this exception to continue so that the firefighters can raise this money for MDA here locally for our, our family's benefits. And the last is, you know, the cure for CMT, I'm hoping it's going to be out there, and I hope every dollar raised will help, and it's, it would be nice, it's comforting to know that the city council will also support that vision of trying to raise as much money as we can for that cure for my daughter's disease. So I would appreciate you all not getting rid of that exception for the firefighters. Thanks.
Thank you so much for taking the time to hear what we have to say today. First off, I want to definitely thank each and every one of you guys for supporting the MDA and the Oklahoma City Fill the Boot efforts for the last several years. Each of you, I know, own an Oklahoma City Fill the Boot hat and probably wear it proudly around the city. You know, you guys have given proclamations to the firefighters and to MDA declaring it Fill the Boot Week. So I know that the intention of the proposed ordinance is to clean up the streets and to address the safety concerns, and I completely commend you for that, Mrs. Allier. And that's something that we'll want to be a partner with you guys on. We don't disagree that pain handling in Oklahoma City is an issue, but we do have some great points that we can work on a solution to make it conducive for MDA, the city of Oklahoma City, and the firefighters. We want to work together to come to a decision that will allow us to continue raising money in the manner that we've done for so many years. One statistic that I want to point out that I'm sure each and every one of you can kind of wear on your sleeve and, you know, tote around proudly is that Oklahoma City Fill the Boot is ranked number 10 in the nation. Now, we all know that Oklahoma City is not the 10th largest city in the nation, so the generosity in which the citizens support this event is just amazing. And I think we all know that everyone looks forward to the Oklahoma City Fill the Boot campaign each and every year. People go to the ATM and get out their dollar bills and just really look forward to this event that puts the firefighters out there in the community, supporting MDA. And, you know, I think it's a great message that they send to the citizens of Oklahoma City when they're out there, that they're entrenched with us, they're, you know, they're highly visible during that week. And so I know that your intentions aren't to devastate the Fill the Boot program, but if this were to pass, that's exactly what would happen. In other cities where we've seen this happen, where they're relegated to the side of the street and out of the medians, there has been upwards of a 75% decrease in the amount of money that they're collecting. Now, you've heard from Dennis and Deborah about what they receive here locally, but let me tell you a little bit more about what we do. There's over 600 citizens right here in Oklahoma City proper that are afflicted by a neuromuscular disease. But as we all know, neuromuscular disease doesn't just affect Deborah, and it doesn't just affect Olivia, it affects Deborah's grandchildren, and Deborah's husband Howard back there, and, you know, you, and her cousins, and everyone else in her family. So there's literally thousands of Oklahoma City residents that would be impacted by the decision that you have in your hands today. You know, in the, we've talked about, or I've heard you talk about, the economic challenges that the city has had to face. And you spoke earlier about where do we get this nearly $7 million to give to the Grand Prix company that spoke up here earlier? And I know that one of the arguments for this ordinance is that we're not telling you to stop filling the boot, we're asking you to do it from the side of the street, and we're asking you to do it in private parking lots and that type of thing. Just like you guys wouldn't be able to dig around and find $7 million, MDA does not have the financial wherewithal to dig around and find nearly $240,000. It's just not possible. That's not something that, in these type of economic times, that we can do. But we do have families that rely on this very heavily for MDA support and the support of the Oklahoma City firefighters. I know that when I first started with MDA about four and a half years ago, you know, when I was telling people that I work with MDA now, and all of them were like, oh, can you introduce me to some firefighters? They're so neat, we love, you know, we love firefighters. And, you know, my son, when he goes around and tells people where I work, he doesn't say I work for MDA, he was four at the time, but he says, she works for MDA Fighter Fighters. That's how he pronounced it. But, you know, we are entrenched together. When you think of MDA, you think of the firefighters. When you think of firefighters, you think of MDA. And that's a partnership that has gone back to 1954. And I know that there is some way that we can come to a resolution that will be conducive for all of us. You know, just a little bit about our clinic. Dr. Beeson is our clinic director at Integra Southwest Medical Center. Whose ward does that fall in? Yours? Okay. It's a really neat clinic. I really encourage you to go visit it sometime, it's up on the fifth floor.
Pete is on my side of the street, isn't he?
Well, you both can come. But, you know, I don't know if you guys have ever been in a situation where you've known someone, or maybe even yourself, has been affected by a devastating disease like ALS or CMT, but I know that I personally have a $35 copay every time I go to the doctor. And if I had to go to a respiratory therapist, a physical therapist, a neurologist, et cetera, et cetera, that's a lot of money out of my pocket each time I have to go visit. Deborah and Olivia are able to come to the MDA clinic free of charge and visit with a whole team of specialists that are able to help them with their disease. And so I just really encourage you guys to either defer the vote or to vote in MDA's favor of not excluding this ordinance. Just so you know, in the history of the Fill the Boot program, we are not aware of any injury or accident that has been a result of the Fill the Boot program. And so while we want to be partners in helping to clean up the city, and we have the 12 talking points that we gave you guys the other day, we also ask that you partner with us to preserve this tradition. So, thank you.
Thank you. Meg, that's it.
I probably just wrap up, so maybe we can hear someone. I'm sorry, I probably might go last, so perhaps we could hear from some of my colleagues?
Okay. Comment on the council's.
Megan, Pat, I think there's something more than safety. I think there's, and it annoys all of us, and it disturbs us, and I'm not talking about guys holding the boots, it's anyone that's out there. And we're just so not seeing them standing there, loitering there, whatever. I heard from several people, and I had asked before, if this is an issue of safety, starting with MDA, and I know this is not just about MDA, it sounds like it is, it's not, because Pat and Meg are just insistent that this be treated without exception, so I understand that, but hearing safety. But from just a safety standpoint to start with, I heard from a couple, we heard from a couple, I had asked earlier, and there have been no street accidents related to this, this event in the 30, 40-plus years. I'm wondering what else is behind the safety issue with regard to accidents that's bringing this to such a concern at this point? Not about this matter, I think we've heard that, but just generally. And, you know, if, if, if really what's behind a lot of this is just addressing more aggressively those folks standing and hanging around where we don't want them hanging around, if it's a priority of ours, then I think the police department will hear it, like they've, like we've heard some other priorities here recently, and, and, and we can do a better job of enforcement. I'm thinking it's more of an enforcement issue than a safety issue.
Pete, is this good? Well, I agree with Sam. You know, we don't have any evidence that it's a safety issue. I mean, that's, that's, we say it's a safety issue, but we don't have any evidence of it. We don't have any accidents, we don't have any evidence at all that it's a safety issue. I think that, I mean, I'm not, I'm not afraid to say what it is. What it is is, we don't want these guys, we don't want bums on the street. It's an anti-beggar ordinance. The fact is, if anything proves you're never going to get rid of beggars on the street, the Fill the Boot campaign does. I mean, if people are willing just to put money in a boot or give money to somebody on the side of the street just because the guy happens to be there, we'll never, that's a problem we'll never solve. It will never be solved by regulating. There's no possible way. The only way to solve it is to stop giving people money that are standing on the street begging. That's the only way. It won't be solved any other way. So if we think this is going to make a difference, it won't make any difference. All it'll do is, like these folks have said, is it'll, it'll kill the Fill the Boot program, but it won't stop people from begging. They're going to be begging as long as people are willing to hand them money. It's, that's just the way that human nature is. And so I think at the core of this is a way to try to stop that from happening. Nobody likes that, I don't like that. I could roll my window up, you know, because I don't want to deal with them, you know? And if I had an extra quarter, I wouldn't give it to some guy standing on the side of the street, I just wouldn't do that. But obviously, I'm alone in that view because there's lots and lots and lots of people in this city that will, because you see these same people standing on the same corner every day begging for money, and people rolling their windows down and giving them money. I think this is just misguided. I'm not going to be able to vote for it because I don't think it'll work. I mean, I think the purpose of doing it is to restrict beggars, and it isn't going to stop it. Enforcement could stop it, but this kind of restriction is not going to make any difference. And I know I've gone both ways on it. We've had, I've had conversations with other people on the council where I leaned one way, and then I've had a conversation where I leaned the other. Well, today, I got to quit leaning, we're going to have to vote, and I'm not going to, I can't vote for it. I just flat can't do it. I mean, it just, if I thought it had one chance of working, I think I might be able to do it, because I don't like that anyway, either. I think that it's a bad situation for the city. On the other hand, the Supreme Court has said these people have a right to stand out there and beg. And so as long as they have a right to stand out there and beg, you've got the, you have the right to roll your window down and fill them the buck, and they'll be back tomorrow. And, and, and in the process, it kills a program that is obviously one that's very important to a lot of the people in this community. So consider me no.
First of all, I would like to thank the individuals that came forth this morning. Ms. Deborah Lust has been a dear friend of my family for years, so that in itself has nothing to do with, with my statements, but it touches my heart to see someone that you, you personally know that has been afflicted in reference to a, a issue of this magnitude, and at the same time, to see, as she so eloquently stated, that, not to know that 20 years ago the dimes that she was dropping in a boot, that she would be the recipient or the beneficiary of some of those services that's paid for out of that boot. I think that we are looking at a crossroad of, of, of social issues and humanitarian concerns that has gone way out of line as it relates to what the ultimate purpose of a program that is a shown proven track record of providing the necessary needs of individuals that cannot be depended upon the city of Oklahoma City, not depended upon other municipalities or the state, but only depended upon volunteers who participate in the program that's not mandated by any chief, captain, or whoever. They're volunteer to go out and stand in the middle of the street and hold a boot up in the heat of the summer or in other conditions, and just ask people would they give a donation to a medical cause that exists in our society. Now, I asked a question. I couldn't get the answer. We have a present ordinance. How many people have been arrested and charged and brought before a judicial court in reference to the ordinance that we have as it relates to what you can and can't do on the street, on the street corner, in the, in the, under the offices of peddling? And it's not there. And so the empirical information that would justify changing a situation that ultimately, like Sam was basically saying, you're basically going to create an absolute zero opportunity for anyone to participate in any freedom of association and freedom of speech and freedom of standing on public ways, that is going to be gone. And we're going to get sued, I don't care how you look at it, we're going to have a lawsuit, and we're going to be in courts defending an issue that I just think that has absolutely no sense in bearing today. I, you know, I'm totally against this whole issue of trying to I, you know, I'm totally against this whole issue of trying to magnify and discriminate on issues of people's, the way they look, their welfare, and their being. And I think this is it, you know? And, you know, you look at some parts of Oklahoma City, and you don't see people on the side of the street. You don't see people in the center median. And then you go to some other parts of the city, and you say, well, there's more over here than it was over on the other side of town. But why? Maybe you have people who have a bigger heart on one side of town who gives to individuals, and so they find that as a place to stand. But how many times have we had a report that these individuals have hijacked a vehicle? How many times have they put a gun in somebody's face, sitting at a stoplight, and told them, you better give me more than a quarter, I want $5? How many times have we had those reports? I remember one day I called down to the city, and I told the lady that there was a person that was approaching a car at 23rd and Broadway. And again, absolutely no response from it. None. So I went around the corner, I turned around, came back, and I just started honking my horn at the guy. He saw what was going on, he moved out of the way. And not one citizen in the city of Oklahoma City has rolled their window down and give anybody a dime. You don't have to put a dime in the boot, you don't have to give a dime, you don't have to give anything to anybody that's standing on a corner. So maybe you ought to have an ordinance that says it's against the law if you, the driver of the vehicle, to roll your window down and give anything to anybody. But I just think that we had a crossroads that, you know, just like America is today, it's about the heart of people, it's about the conditions of lives of people, and it's about those who have and those who have not. And I just, I'm, I am so passionate about the rights of people to be where they want to be and stand where they can stand, and I just cannot support this in any degree. And I think it's a shame that we have allowed it, our fire department, to get mixed up in something that is about likes and dislikes of people, where and where not, and these individuals have done a yeoman's job in the city of Oklahoma City like they have done all over the cities in the United States. When you look at '06 and '07, in the state of California, $7 million was raised by the boot program. $7 million that was disseminated between the state universities for the medical schools to research this very same issue that we're talking about today. But the $240,000 or whatever their amount is that's generated in the city of Oklahoma City, how dare we sit here and try to stop that? I just think that this is, this is, like Pete said, it's about something else.
Pat?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, to Sam's comment about why we're doing it right now. I think the, what I'm feeling, we're trying to address the increase of people standing in the street and disrupting traffic. It's getting worse, and this, hopefully we'll call it people's attention to the problem. Secondly, I wonder if our lack of enforcement in this area has been impacted by the fact that we're asking the police to enforce an ordinance where, at the second part of the ordinance, we grant exceptions to do exactly what they're being asked to enforce people, take action against people doing. And I think that's a mistake. I think that sends the wrong signal. I think, Meg and I have had lots of discussions of this, and we have actually no desire to impact negatively the activities of the MDA. They do a great job, they perform a valuable service, but we have a significant number of charitable organizations in Oklahoma City that do the same thing without stepping in the streets. We've got examples of, well, any organization you want to pick, United Way raises money. Probably a better example maybe is the Salvation Army when their Fill the Kettle campaign during Christmas. They're not in the streets. And I've raised money for nonprofits before. I know it's a difficult task, but I know also that when presented with an obstacle, there are alternatives that need to be considered. And the fact that we're asking them to stay out of the streets doesn't mean that we want them to have any less success raising money. But we, I am concerned about the safety, not only of the firefighters and these other solicitors out there, it's the safety of the motors. They're being distracted at critical times in their travel, as they approach a busy intersection. And I, we haven't had an accident yet, but let's put this ordinance in effect and see if we can prevent having accident. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Wow. A couple of things. First of all, I also really want to thank everybody. Andrea, you were very eloquent. I appreciate you bringing your folks down. Bart, I got your email yesterday, and I also appreciate your concern and interest. We have had some meetings. I know you've got your regional representative here from Kansas City, and I know he's been here twice to deal with this issue. Again, I'm grateful. MDA is an amazing organization. It provides a tremendous amount of support for people that need it. And I think I heard somebody say that, you know, Fill the Boot is in the crosshairs. Fill the Boot is not in the crosshairs today. I need to reiterate over again that we are not preventing by this ordinance, this campaign from occurring. All we are suggesting is it needs to occur on the side of the street in a public right-of-way, not in the median, and not in the roadway. I was up at 5:10 this morning watching the Channel 9 news, and they did a very nice piece on this. And all of the footage that they showed of the firefighters, were not them standing in the median, and were not them standing on the side of the road, but were literally weaving through traffic, going from car to car to car to ask for money. Now, in the last couple of, in the last month in this community, we've lost two bicyclists who were riding along the side of the road. We're dealing at this time and place with distracted drivers, and I don't think anybody will deny that. People are texting, people are talking on the phone, people are eating in their cars, they're otherwise occupied. I heard somebody say that the dollars we raise in this campaign outweighs the risk. I see Chief Bryant back here. Chief, do you want to be the person that makes a phone call to a family that says, I've had a firefighter injured, or I've had a firefighter hurt because of this campaign that we're running? I also think the comment was made over and over again about how generous Oklahomans are. They are among the most generous, if not the most generous, people in the country. I believe if MDA will think out of the box and do a pass the boot campaign from the street, the way they've done, and partner, as other charities do all over this community, there would be no reason they couldn't use a piece of equipment that's out of service and go to Target, or go to Walmart, or go to a sponsoring organization and pass the boot with the folks. Andrea talked about wanting to build rapport with the community. There's no reason that same rapport can't occur in front of a Walmart or a Target than it can standing in the median, in the middle of the street. Something that Councilman Kelly brought up, and I really wasn't sure, I wanted to go there, but I'm going to have to, because I think there's been some misinformation. The firefighters that participate in this campaign are not volunteers, they're on the city payroll. And any one of those firefighters that gets injured puts the city at risk of a worker's comp claim. And I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to this city to not allow an exception if we believe this is dangerous for our other citizens. And I need to be very clear to Councilman Kelly that this has nothing to do with the way people look, or what part of town they're in, or whether there have's or have-nots. We are trying to protect the people that are standing in the middle of the street, and we're trying to protect our firefighters, we're trying to protect our drivers, and this is about public safety. It is not about MDA, it's not about damaging a campaign, and it's not in any way about diversity.
Can I ask legal a question?
Sure.
As it relates to when this was first introduced, as I understand it, that the introduction was deferred, is that right?
No, I don't recall it being deferred.
It was, it was not deferred at the introduction stage, and the second hearing was also held on schedule. There was a deferral between the second hearing and this one to address some concerns that had come up, among them, concerns about the existence of that exception.
Well, so basically, you have rewritten the ordinance that was previously introduced, is that right?
The initial proposed ordinance eliminated from, kept people out of the medians was the major thing that that was concerned with. And then from discussions with council, the additional concern arose that if it's not safe to be in the medians for anyone else, then why is this exception there? Then that was considered for a number of weeks, and we resulted in the ordinance that's up for adoption today.
But in considering, you know, what is the difference between drafting a new ordinance and the amendment? Because as I look at this, from the original introduction, this has been completely replaced, and there hasn't been an introduction in reference to that, which is a complete new ordinance.
Essentially, what happened, we never opined that no exception could be legal. That was not our legal opinion. We think we could craft an exception that would be legal if that's the will of the council. We think that some changes should be made to the exception as it now stands. But essentially, the current ordinance allows anyone to solicit from the sides of the street and also the medians. So there really hasn't been an incentive for anyone to challenge the ordinance, because we allow anyone to solicit now from the median and from the sides of the street. Arguably, the current ordinance prohibits people from walking in the street without the permit. However, the actual language that prohibits people from being in the streets currently just says stand. So one of the amendments was to add stand or walk. So as far as the exception is concerned, we were asked to draft a version of the ordinance with the exception deleted. I think it is less likely that there'll be a challenge with the exception deleted. But in terms of, could we craft an exception that would be legal, I don't think it's entirely clear from the law, but we can certainly do that. One idea we had to bolster the exception would be to provide for a study program for anyone getting the exception.
I believe there are some states, and the reason why I ask that is as it relates to procedure of the council, is that if you introduced an ordinance, then it's introduced. And then what I see here is, once there was an introduction, now staff has took that that was introduced and basically rewrote a complete new ordinance. And I would, I would challenge the issue on the amendment. I think this is a complete new ordinance that we are presented here today with to make a vote on that hasn't been introduced.
I think that's more of a function of the way that the system has been crafted for the introduction, and then two hearings on ordinances. Staff did not generate any changes to this. Perhaps it needs to be, maybe it needs to be continued a couple of weeks.
It's just like any other ordinance, when it's in front of the council, if that ordinance has been introduced, that the changes to this section were introduced, and you can make additional amendments to that section after it's introduced for changes along the way.
So the changes aren't substantial enough to require it to be introduced again?
To reintroduce? I don't believe so.
Okay. That answer your question, Skip?
No.
It may not resolve your issue, but I think it answered your question.
Everything in this amendment has been stricken out, has been, there's a strike through it, except C. Is that, unless somebody's got something that I don't have. Because I'm looking at what was provided to me, and the previous amendment, and the new amendment, so is the new amendment the markup? Is that the markup?
Francis, do you want to answer?
On the back page of the memo, where it says proposed amendments, those are the proposed amendments. That's the markup. Those are the amendments that would be made to the ordinance as it was introduced.
Yeah, Councilman, the amendments on the attached pages one and two, those amendments were not included in the ordinances introduced.
Right.
Now, after the financial impact report, is the original ordinance is introduced? And just as a matter of procedure, the council, through Robert's Rules of Order, has always allowed ordinances to even be amended on the floor. And Robert's Rules of Order, after they're amended, then they're considered to be reintroduced and adopted. They consider that a hearing, whether it be the final hearing, ordinances can be amended and considered to be reintroduced. Now, it's council's policy that we have three hearings on these ordinances. And this is the first time that, you know, you've brought this to our attention, that do we want to have a rule for amendments of ordinances that require more than the hearing at final adoption? And that would be council policy.
I just believe that when 90%, or 95% of, and then you add what was not considered from the original amendment, because the boot program was never presented to us, never was presented to me, and the original ordinance as affecting the Fill the Boot program. And now we have here a complete redrafting that totally eliminates any permit application as it relates to solicitation. And I just think that that is, that's more than just an amendment that addresses such a material and substantial part of a change or a complete new entity.
I think we hear you, but I think we've heard from the counselor too. Ready to move on? Yeah, Larry?
If you're going to vote, I'll be happy to stay and vote, but if not, I've got a personal privilege, I have to leave to go to a funeral. So I will tell people, I'm going to vote in favor of this ordinance, I'm not going to get into a big discussion.
Well, why don't we ask for a motion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Anybody against voting at this point? All right, let's vote then. Cast your votes. The motion fails four-four. Okay, move on. Move on to 10B, and this is the noise ordinance. Cindy is here to help explain it.
Mayor and Councilwoman Cindy Richard from the municipal council's office. I'm sorry that Councilman Max, he had to leave. I'm sorry that Councilman Max, he had to leave because this really, all this work for the past year on the noise chapter arose at his request and we've been working on it for quite some time with a number of people. I also understand that it's late in the day, so let me defer to you, members of council. I can give you a lengthier presentation at the public hearing or go over the points now. Mayor, if you'd like to give me some direction on that.
How long do you think it'll take?
I can do a real quick, couple of minute overview, and then if you have any questions that come up, I'll be more than glad.
Let's do that. It's just being introduced today. Why don't you give us an overview since it's already scheduled and if there are questions, we'll take them.
Well, Councilman Max, he approached us approximately a year ago about some issues with noise that I think they actually arose during the hot rod weekend over on Meridian and was requesting and inquiring about things that could be done to help regulate noise issues. And I'll tell you, the noise chapter is complex. It's like a jigsaw puzzle wrapped on top of a crossword puzzle and everything intersects with everything else. The primary thrust of what we've done after working with, intently with Chief City, Assistant City Manager Barry, consulting with Debbie Martin on the process of noise permits, and Jim Thompson, we've, we've come up with a plan to give more guidance in the issuance of noise permits. You know, you can't completely stop noise, but you can regulate it more and try to give due care to the citizens that are out there and being subjected to it. So essentially, we've worked a lot on the permitting process and, and giving more guidance to the folks over in code enforcement and to police on what they need to look at in issuing noise permits that actually come from the city manager's office. We're kind of moving construction noise permits, creating a provision for that and moving it over to development services with Bob Teener and his folks. What I looked at across the country is if you get into construction noise, you're talking about a whole chapter unto its own. So really, we're, you know, we need Bob Teener to work with Dennis and, and kind of come up with issues for construction. We needed to make clear for law enforcement purposes, the difference between noise disturbances and excessive noise violations, so that police officers can have a better handle on what they can enforce and what they can't. So we went through the entire chapter. Excessive noise are those things that are subject to fairly easy measurements. The noise permits will be based on distance, up to 2,500 feet away from the source of the sound, and it can be any amount less than that. And that's easy for a police officer to go out and measure rather than decimal limits or that sort of thing. So we've kind of distinguished between those two areas. And then we, we needed to make clear that if you're making noise that's allowable under the chapter, whether it's by your permit, whether it's for stationary sources of sound with the decimal levels, then you cannot be subject to disturbing the peace citation or a noise violation. You just can't. So we needed to make that clear in here. That's essentially the overview. I can give you a whole lot more detail, but I think you've probably had enough for today. And I'll be glad to come back. You can have your support staff send me any questions you might have, and I'll, I'll be more than happy to answer them at the next hearing. So take a look at what we presented to you and let me know if you have any questions at all.
Okay, so this will be back before us again, opportunity for questions. Cindy, thank you. Okay. Cast your votes. Passage unanimously. Item. Were you wanting to speak on item 10B? Come on up. I apologize for not asking if there's anyone here wishing to speak.
My name's John Sweeney. I'm Director of Operations for Consume Hospitality. We own the Staybridge Suites at Mayan Memorial in Oklahoma City, and I believe I spoke with Congressman Ryan the night of the event. Permits are issued, have no problem with anyone's right to go out and make all the money they want to make in this world, as long as it does not affect me. One of the bars in front of me was issued a noise permit. They set up a sound system that would have made Jerry Jones jealous, and I sell beds for a living. I have to give somebody a place to sleep. And if I do not do that, I've failed my commitment to them. That noise permit impacted me to the tune of about $10,000. So I asked Congressman Ryan to send me the ordinance that was being proposed so I could review it. I did review it. The only thing that I think we should change is the length of time they have right now, 10 days prior to the event to put in their application. I would like to see that extended to 30 days to give everyone equal opportunity to vote on it or to approve or disapprove, whatever, because right now it states that you can object to the permit. And the city manager will not issue a permit to anyone that has objected that permit. But we only have 10 days, similar to the alcohol laws. You have to do a radius report, so let's keep the 2,500-foot radius. But should they fill out a radius report, mail us a letter letting us know that someone with, we are in the 2,500 feet that the new ordinance will allow? How are we going to be notified so that we can object to the permit? I guess that's my only question. I do apologize, but after sitting, it's been a very emotional day. I've got a great civics lesson. Thanks for everything, but I always seem to be last on the list every time I come on the day that there's so many heated issues to discuss. So I do apologize for interrupting you.
If you have a question that you're trying to get information on, I suggest you talk to Cindy.
Okay, and I'm not exactly sure how this works. We had spoken, and he asked me to come and speak on behalf. I do apologize, but...
No, we're glad you came. But we don't have the answer to your question. I guess that's, that's the problem. And we want you to get that answer. I would suggest you talk to Cindy. And we're going to be continuing this item for another four weeks, I guess, two weeks and then two weeks. So we will be voting for four more weeks.
Okay, so I do apologize. This is a learning process for me, but I'm very, this is very near and dear to my business. I need to make sure that I'm here representing my company to prevent anything like that in the future from happening.
I'm glad you came.
Thank you very much, sir.
I think several people will be interested in the same question, so I would, would hope that we get an answer at the September 14th meeting in public, so everybody who is also concerned in addition to someone here would get an answer as to where in the process, if any, is a potential victim of the noise to protest the permit.
I will just say quickly, Councilman, that we had that in a, in a prior draft, so we have language that we can show to you if, if that's your concern. And I'll be happy to bring that to the next hearing and show you what the potential is for that.
All right.
Thank you, sorry.
You bet. Now we're ready to vote on item 10B to, this item's been introduced. Cast your votes. Passage unanimously. Item 10C is another ordinance that's been introduced. It's from by Councilman Kelly.
In the interest of time, I would like for, for Russell to, to take the, the lead on this and just try to make a presentation as quickly as possible.
Okay, this is a minor amendment to the Northeast 23rd Street overlay district. We've been working with Councilman Kelly and trying to clean up that area for some period of time, and the overlay had accomplished removal of C4 uses there, which was one of the major contributors to the appearance, the appearance problems we're experiencing. This is in addition to that. This is a C3 use, which is basically light auto repair, which we are now proposing for deletion from that overlay district as well. We're having, I think we're experiencing compliance issues with this particular use as well. So this would, what this would do would be to prohibit the addition of any, any more of these businesses on the 23rd Street corridor. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I think we basically understand it.
A little bit.
All right. Second, anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. On the city manager reports. Oh, items from council. Gary? Sam?
Real quick, on the historical preservation changes we made, Jim, I just asked that a future water bill just very succinctly and simply make those changes known to all our residents. I think that can be done very, that are going to be done by administrative review. That's, that's a big change. Secondly, just want to extend my appreciation to the manager's office and Eric Winger, Mayor, on, on getting back to council. This is one of your reports, Jim. MAPS 3 Senior Health and Wellness Center, I think really responds and reflects the discussion from a couple of weeks ago and the priority of not only getting the discussion and involvement of the full advisory committee, which, which I understand happened, and we're, we're given some of those comments in this report, but getting back to us, a place that really suggests to me this will get us up to speed. The only thing in discussion, Councilman McAteer is a member of the advisory committee, he and Eric Winger and I had was that at some point for the council's consideration, in order that this priority, a wellness center, it really gets understood by the general public, that the council would consider setting a timetable, for example, a time in the future for which, say, the design contract would be let for the first center, not where it is, but just for the first center. And in that discussion, I had suggested 18 months for consideration, for council's consideration, just as a way again for the general public to understand the priority with, with that kind of timeline. And then everything in this report gets backed up for that time. Thank you.
Okay. Pete?
I too want to, want to thank you for that report. That, that was right on as far as I was concerned, and I understand the, the discussion that was had at the MAPS Advisory Committee meeting, council meeting, was very good, very much, and what Councilman McAteer said was a very good rendition of what, what went on at the council meeting.
Mr. McAteer, I was at the meeting, and Mr. McAteer did a great job, I think, of, of relating your concerns to the advisory meeting.
All right, Meg?
I guess just a couple of us had the opportunity to participate in the weekend retreat for our youth council members, and just we have a really outstanding group of young people this year that are going to serve as our ward representatives and at-large representatives. And it was a very fun afternoon, enjoyed spending the time with my colleagues and with our young folks.
Skip? All right. Pat?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
All right. On the city manager reports.
Someone sign up to speak.
Okay. On item C, this is the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant. Phil Sye has signed up to speak.
Phil Sye, President, Firefighter Association, Oklahoma City, 157 Northwest 6th. I'll be as brief as I can, know everybody's tired. I just wanted to address some of the issues. I got a copy of, of the letter that was online, posted on the city's website from Jim, and I just wanted to address some of the issues that are in the letter. Number one, it talks about the 45 firefighter positions that are funded as a one-time, funded one-time in the current budget. And it says it should be noted that grantees must maintain their staffing on this particular grant, that a staffing level that existed at the time of the award, as well as a safer funded staffing for a two-year period of performance. Says laying off of firefighters during the two-year period of performance will result in the termination of the grand award. If you go to the grant document, which I have here in front of me, it very specifically says on that, in that particular section, it says unless the grantee has been afforded a waiver of this requirement. If you go back to page four of this document, says very specifically that the Secretary of the DHS has been granted the authority to issue waivers for many of the requirements that are reflected in the safer governing statute for fiscal year 2010. So there is a way, and it goes on to say the subsection is so, and the DHS will waive the requirement to commit to retaining those firefighters under this program. So there is a way to fill out and request a waiver if we're concerned that by cutting, potentially cutting 45 more firefighters next year that are funded as, on a one-time basis with use tax money, which I believe you passed on June 29th, is, is not a concern. The waiver can be requested, and, and I really firmly believe it would be granted in a case where firefighter safety is a concern, protecting the citizens is a concern. We're concerned about the 45 firefighters that are funded one time. I want to just reiterate that we're watching the sales tax receipts and the use tax receipts very closely. The last four months have been very good. The last one was outstanding. And, and so just looking at what's occurred in the last four months, it appears to me that we're at about '08, '09 sales tax collection levels, if it continues. And I understand, that's a big if, but if that continues and we remain at those levels, and the question I have to ask is why are we funding 45 positions temporarily on a one-time basis with use tax money? Because the, the numbers would tend to indicate that if we continue to collect at that rate, those 45 positions should be funded with general, general fund money, because they were funded that way in '08, '09. In fact, in '08, '09, we had 951 firefighters' positions funded with general fund dollars based on the collections that were occurring in the proposed budget for that particular fiscal year. And now that we're back on track, or apparently, it appears we're back on track for the last four months, there's no reason to fund those 45 positions temporarily. Now, I know it's uncomfortable for me to bring this up, but you know, during the MAPS campaign, there were some promises made that we would, it would be a vote for police and firefighters, for public safety, and that we'd have more firefighters on the street than we have now. We don't. We have less. We have 29 less than we had last year. And am I concerned about that? Yes, but I'd be more concerned about it whenever I consider the fact that 45 of those are now considered to be temporarily funded for only one year. That doesn't make any sense to me, not in light of current sales and use tax collections that we have coming into the city. So I'm asking you to consider this particular grant as a, to a certain extent, as a way out. It's an excellent opportunity for this city to get three, potentially $3 million, enough money to hire all 29 of those positions back and give us some budgetary relief there. And you have the option of applying for a waiver if you're concerned about potentially having to cut positions later, which I hope doesn't happen, but I want to, I want to just emphasize that to council. That potential to fill out that waiver and request that waiver is there, and it wasn't in the letter, so I wanted to address that issue. You know, I've got to say, the public safety sales tax provides tremendous, tremendous relief, provides almost one-third of the tire personnel cost for the fire department. I've got to, I've got to ask, you know, it just seems unreasonable that we're funding these 45 positions temporarily on a one-time basis. So I'm asking you, I'm urging you, please, support, applying for this grant, let's get this funding if it's at all possible, let's try to get some of these firefighters back on the street, and let's be concerned about protecting our citizens and putting those fire trucks back in service that we took out of service on July 1st. So thank you very much.
Other comments on the city manager reports?
Yeah, just very quickly, I want to highlight two. One is that we did do some changes in the snow routes. I know it's August and we're all out focused on snow routes, but, but over, we had some, obviously some pretty severe winter weather this winter, and a couple of things, areas came to light. Mr. McAteer had an area southwest that, that he had a concern of. Mr. Morris had a concern over on, on Willshire, had some concern. Mr. Kelly had some concerns over on, on northeast over the Hefner area. And we only have so many resources to go do the roads, and if you spread it out too thin, you can't do anything well. And so we were concerned about adding additional routes at that point in time. As we got into this, Commissioner Mon volunteered to maintain some additional routes in the southeast part of the city. So we were able to move some of the routes that we were doing in the southeast part of the city, primarily in Mr. White's area, and pick up some other routes that were concerned with some council, and so that's what we're doing. We don't have any more resources, but because he was able to pick up some, some routes, we were able to add some additional routes that were concerned by not just the council but also none of our citizens. So that's the adjustments we're making on that. And then on the sales and use tax collections, yes, we had a very good month in, in August. I mean, it's one of the largest checks we've ever received, but we need to understand that if we, as we analyze, analyze that sales tax check, it appears that most of it is storm-related. Not all of it, there's positive trends in the area, the economy is doing better. We've got the Devon Tywens going up that's adding some, some additional attention, but when we really do the analysis of it, analysis of the sales tax check, a good part of it is due to the storm, the hail damage, the roofers that are in town, the glass, the breakages that occur, the, all those type of things. And so it's going to be interesting, interesting to see how that trend continues over the next couple of months. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions?
I have a comment on what Mr. Sye said and on this staff report. At, at the end of it, it says the staff would like your direction and input prior to the beginning of the formal application process. As I read it, I don't know why we don't, why we wouldn't go ahead and ask for that money. I mean, I know if other people, if the rest of you have other views of that, I, I don't know. I'd like to know the downside of asking for that additional.
But, that being said, we are planning to go forward, but I did think it was important to point out and be transparent, and point out what the pros and cons are of the grant. Most of them are pros.
Yeah. No, I agree, but so, but your present plan is, given what's in this memo, that you're going to go forward and ask for the money? Okay.
All right. Any other questions about city manager reports? Citizens to be heard. All right, ready to adjourn? Or adjourn?